Everyone to the December twelfth, twenty twenty three. Planning Board and Z RAC meeting. We have a quorum with us today. So why don't we go through the roll call? And then we'll dive in. Oh, I should note that we are being recorded by WinCam. Thank you, WinCam, as all via Zoom. If you don't wish to appear on the recording, please turn off your mics and your video. So roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
Here.
Carrie Leighton.
Present.
There are Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Eaching Scott.
Present.
And I'm Dave Jerris, I'm present as well. So we have a tight schedule this evening. We're going to have a presentation from Emily Innes on MBTA three A. And Emily has to leave us exactly at seven thirty. At which point we're going to transition directly to North Main Street with Michael Wang. And we do have to have a very strange break at seven thirty where we will have to re recontinue a meeting that I mistakenly scheduled in the middle of the C RAC meeting, but we'll move that to later on tonight. Anyway, why don't I just turn this right over to Emily?
Thank you, Diab. For the record, Emily Ennis, Ennis Associates, and we're the lead consultant on the three A side of the joint Z RAC meeting here and the project. Actually, not to have false presences, I don't have a presentation for Z RAC today. My understanding was that they members had been working on looking at some areas for continued discussion about testing for three A.
Yes, they they had, and I was wondering if you had had any opportunities to take a look at those. I think we got some info from us.
Yes, so we have mapped the three, three areas that Taylor asked us to map. We have also downloaded, mapped and downloaded couple of extra geographic areas that we received yesterday. We have not yet finished the modeling on that. It does take a little while to do that, so we hope to have that after this meeting. I can certainly show you the remapping of the three main districts. Taylor had requested them in a large format to be used by the Z RAC, I believe, at their next meeting. Happy to put those up on the screen so we can see those. If that works for you. And I would have to have the agenda stopped in order to do that. Right? Let me just put the first one up. So you should see the CBD two map with the, this is the one that so we've been asked to look or create two maps, one CBD two with the historic assets on them. And the second one, let me know if it does not pop up. It's just the CBD two without the historic assets. And the third map is the G B D two. So we've completed those. And as I said, we have some additional districts that came out of the Z RAC meeting last week. We received them yesterday. We are still in the process of testing those and should have them soon. My understanding was that members of the Z RAC had some additional questions that they just wanted time to ask, and so happy to answer those at this point.
Okay, folks, so the ball is in your court. Z RAC members.
You will have to raise your hand and I then have to allow you to talk, I'm pretty sure. But if not, then just talk.
Yeah, I'm just not seeing where to, oh, good, where to raise our hands here on the current screen.
Well, we can hear you. You can go ahead.
Oh, Michelle's got her hand up. I'll let her start. I guess. Well, I can start. I was unable to be at the last week's Z RAC meeting because I had to run the DRC meeting, but I was at the other ones and I believe there are some other, as Emily mentioned, there are some other possibilities that were discussed and look forward to seeing when those are mapped out. I think one of the things that I design review would like to see is that that we get as out of the actual town center overlay as as possible, because when you put an overlay, the three A overlay over the already in place CBD zoning. You know, there is confusing and I think it's counterproductive to have this district over what's already kind of complicated. Divided CBD bunch of districts. And I think changing to the by right issue in the CBD really undercuts the zoning objectives that of the CBD, which the planning board several years ago spent a lot of time in an effort putting into place. I think there are clip, there are clearly several alternatives to the town center overlay, and my hope is that we can just somehow take that off the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
I think Michelle does have her hand up.
Sure, you can go ahead.
Hey, folks. Hi, this is Michelle McCarthy. I am also a member of the Historic Commission. I think I've mentioned before that I'm just really looking for some alternatives, as I think we're calling it overlay options to help protect most of the historic buildings downtown. I think that's really important. I've been talking to a lot of people around town and members of town meeting and you know, people are nervous about change and about how this is going to impact our, you know, national registered historic downtown. I know before we've asked the consultants who have said that they've done some work on some his historic plant towns like this, if they were still sort of waiting for that information, we haven't heard from the consultants yet. So I'm not sure if they're able to speak to that tonight, or if they could send us information on some ideas that they've done in other towns to help protect historic buildings. That would be my first comment. Number two, still waiting to hear back on Brookline and what they did in some of their, the Brookline Village, especially as historic areas. I'd really like to see that information. I'm not sure if these consultants worked on that, or if we just have to pull that from Brookline. And um, I agree with Ellen. I think it's very confusing for everyone that there's already been a lot of work done at the town with the master plan and the central business district to protect these historic buildings. And I'm really hoping that the consultants can look at what we worked last week on, which was this idea of some housing for this over in the state, when we're calling it the Saint Mary's, Saint Mary's area, and also the Grove Place area. And Route three, I think that you know, there's been a lot of back and forth, but I think we just really need to see those numbers. We need to see the calculations and see if we can meet our numbers. My last question is I noticed on one of the documents that was sent out, I think it was from you, Taylor, that it was really helpful. Don't have it in front of me right now. I'm sorry. Concord. Their numbers were a lot lower than us. I saw today you sent the numbers that Milton had. Milton's obviously much different community than Winchester. But I was curious why we're Concord's numbers, which seems a little similar to ours, and they, I think, have two commuter stops. Why do they have less numbers than us? I don't know if that's a consultant thing, if that's just the way that their numbers work. I'm just curious, like, why are our number, why is our number, like, closer to Milton than Concord? Because it seems to me that we're more like Concord. So I'm, how did they come up with those numbers? Is that anything we can push back on?
So everyone, just just for reference, earlier today, I sent out an email to members of the Z RAC explaining how the town of Milton last night passed their MBTA three A zoning. Milton was required to Milton is a, is a rapid transit community. So they actually have the manapand trolley, which makes them a rapid transit community, which means that they needed roughly twenty four hundred new dwelling units. Winchester needs twelve. Emily, do you happen to know why what Concord's numbers are and why Concord might be different than Winchester? Or if you don't know the exact data, which is okay, we can, we can get that. Do you happen to know what the state used to determine how many dwelling units each community needed?
I'm looking at Concord right now. I have that up. Concord is is a commuter rail. They are required to have a minimum multifamily unit capacity of one thousand ninety four units. Minimum land area of fifty and fifty percent of their district must be located in a station area. The base calculation is dependent on the number of housing units in the twenty twenty census. And then there are additional calculations depending on the commuter type or the sorry, the transit type for the community. And that's all online. If you go to the, and I'm gonna, can I put it, do you have chat enabled on this? No, you don't. I'll, I'll provide it to you, but the E O H L C has a very good website on the MBTA Communities Act. And it has all the information. If you look in the compliance guidelines, it will give you the exact calculations. But it starts with the twenty twenty housing units. Concord has seven thousand two hundred and ninety five from twenty twenty, and I'm just typing in Winchester's now eight thousand one hundred and thirty five. So your minimum capacity, of course, is one thousand two hundred and twenty. And that is compared to Concord's. As I said earlier of, yeah, just to finish typing, remind myself one thousand ninety four. So you're not, you're, you're about a hundred, a couple of hundred difference.
Okay, I think what I'm sorry, I think what I saw earlier was much less, but that does sound a little closer. Okay.
You're very welcome. Couple of other things that you mentioned. Brookline, we did RKGs and Ennis Associates did work on a review of the zoning, but we did not write the zoning for Brookline. So I would have to do some research myself to see exactly how they handled anything, the historic buildings, if they handled it differently. I, through sort of my planning career, have worked in a lot of historic downtowns. I haven't yet drafted three A zoning for historic downtowns, because we're all in the middle of drafting that now. So I would expect that I'll be drafting yours at the same time I draft it for other communities with historic downtowns. But my professional experience has included a lot of historic downtowns, including some work in historic villages in Connecticut and strategies for historic preservation. So certainly happy to share that document with you if you would find it useful.
Thank you. I think that would be really useful. I think that some friends on the Brookline Historic Commission, and I know they have, like, I think numerous staffs, town planners and paid historic commission members. So it's just, I feel like we're always kind of chasing after them. But they were the ones that had brought to our attention that they really worked hard on that language. So I think it's something we can look at, especially something, the Brookline Village language. And also, they said they worked really hard on the site, which I think we're not there yet, but as we get there, they worked a lot with the height and like sloping and setbacks, so that it wasn't sort of this big looming building over the street. So I think we're just now trying to figure out where we can put this. And as we move forward, that's more of a design, but that might help as well. And I know that I saw some great designs that your consultants had put together at the meeting we had at the JEC. So I think, I think that will be a little bit easier. When do you think you guys look, only because we're meeting tomorrow night, when do we think that this idea of maybe the Saint Mary's area, like, when do we think we might get some yay, this works, or no, this doesn't work, just so we don't get too excited about it and then find out it doesn't work?
Right, exactly. And that's a, that's an excellent question from, so from our end, we're still modeling. I would hope, I believe we've got a set of, sorry, a schedule to review it tomorrow and see where we are. And I can provide an update at that point.
And Michelle, if you don't mind, just for your clarification, our meeting is next Wednesday, not tomorrow. Just don't want to make, I just don't want to make you show up to Town Hall and no one else being there.
If I'm all I would have. Okay, thank you.
For next Wednesday, you should have it for next Wednesday. I was a little concerned about tomorrow as well. But yes, for next Wednesday, you should have it for that meeting.
And as part of that, I know that there's a church on the corner of Mount Vernon and like that kind of was just called like that rotary across from Town Hall. That's been converted to condos. There's a bank right next to it. So it seems to me, I was at a funeral there yesterday, that, you know, there could be a contiguous, there's a lot of homes that are already multifamily. And there's already some units, and I know that Saint Mary's is looking at merging with the different church in town and possibly closing that school. So I wouldn't be, I think where it's coming down the road of that turning into something else, so it would be interesting to get, you know, to get on top of it.
Useful information. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the Z RAC or the public have any questions about MBTA three A?
If not, maybe just a quick note of where we're going from here might be useful for people to understand. Sure. So so from my perspective, our next task collectively is to define the the final districts that we'll be drafting zoning for. So obviously, Z RAC is meeting next week. We're looking forward to providing them the the data for that. And then once we understand, A, what, what, what it looks like from our end as we finish modeling and get Z RAC's thoughts, and then obviously the planning board's thoughts. We'd like to start doing the drafting. We also know that we'll be going back to the public at some point to show them what the districts look like, what the zoning looks like and get their input. So where nobody listening should think that we're finished yet, but we are definitely on our way in terms of progress. So I guess for the opportunity to meet with you all tonight.
Great. I guess I just wanted to add in support of some of the things that are being said is that, and I just discovered and that so I guess with, i- if we move from special purpose to buy right, the five year demolition delay on historic buildings doesn't hold. And so we wouldn't be able to have that protection. So I think I'm, you know, I think in light of that fact that I became aware of, I'm, I'm more supportive of sort of moving the the three A zoning off of the historic buildings and basically finding you know, working with that, I I noticed that thirty eight church and forty church are still on the map and those are historic. So I'm also hoping that the the map generation can be nimble and responsive in terms of being able to have iterations to, number one, I guess, to make sure the historic properties are off, number two, to kind of get our our number down to the lowest it can be to to conform. So so we're gonna have to do that by trial and error, I guess, and see, see where it gets us. I know that we have capability to rerun the maps in house with our engineering department. But those are just some some thoughts.
So I just, I just want to point out that the planning board hasn't discussed all of the parameters on this. So that I don't know how the board feels about keeping the numbers down as low as possible. I think we have some competing interests we need to talk about. So at some point, Emily, you have to tell us when you no longer have the resources to keep running maps, because I'm sure we could ask you to generate a new map every week. So at some, at some point, the planning board will have to decide that we have a large enough palette of maps and things to choose.
I think we need to be able to run the apps in house to to really get the numbers in.
I, obviously, I don't know that we have the resources.
About getting those numbers, you know, to an appropriate level. Which I think that's a conversation that we're gonna have.
So I don't know that we have the resources to run those maps in house. We've never run them in house.
Yes, Taylor ran them. And the the engineering department knows how to do it with the MOB.
Taylor, can you comment on that?
Nick, I did run a single map for you. That took me probably two and a half hours to do just for you. So, you know, we don't really actually have the capacity to do that. I'm
Okay, well, I guess I asked Emily not to use up the the map runs until we get a chance to look at it. And I think we do have to optimize the numbers and we need to get the historic properties off of there. I, 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 Diab, I don't want those map trials to run out before we have time to talk about it.
I agree, and I I think that what what you're discussing are policy issues in terms of what does the planning board want in terms of what our goal is for the number of units? And I, I, I think that we we haven't had that discussion.
So maybe we haven't, I mean.
So why don't we, we should probably set up a planning board meeting where we discuss what those policy things should be, and maybe we can do that at our next meeting.
I also wanted to add that it is my opinion that I'm still not, I, it, it's my sense that Z RAC hasn't fully decided as a whole that we want to pivot away from using these historic buildings within the three A zoning, but it's just an option we would like to consider. I I don't think that it's, I wouldn't say that's, I would, that Michelle was speaking for the whole board in terms of us wanting to entirely pivot away from using historic areas in the three A zone.
I would, I would second with Tommy. I think we're still under discussion. And there's still, in my opinion, there's still potential to have some change in historic district.
I, I think you're inviting teardowns of the buildings.
Hold on one sec. This is really, let's, Nick, Nick, why don't we have this?
It can be renovation, adaptive reuse or addition. We still want the historic look, but we can have, even the Newbury Street can change over time. Why not in Winchester?
Because on Newbury Street, those buildings are protected and in Winchester, they're not right now. So I totally agree with you. I love, I've renovated historic properties. That's my life's passion and I agree. I think there's ways to look at this, but when you don't have them protect, when they're protected, they will be renovated and preserved and modernized. But when they're not, they will, it will be calling and it will be calling for demolition and there's not
Yeah, we don't have the five year demolition delay. There are no protections. And I think that that, I think we have to be honest.
The purview of this, of this committee, I think Diab was trying to say, I think this is, again, I think we're going off topic here.
I just, I just want to point out, Nick, that we really should be sitting back and letting the Z RAC draw their opinions. And the planning board will duke it out at a later night. So let's, let's just step back and let the Z RAC discuss.
Yeah, I think we also have to think about at town meeting, if we want this to be successful, we need to present a plan that will be successful. And I think there's a lot of other options here that can do this. I think this is, it's gonna be great to add some of this housing. It is. And I think all the hard work that the planning board and everyone's been working on, and I love some of Lance's ideas about the different zones up on, you know, North Main. I think that's going to be really well received, but we, we have to realize that, you know, we have to pass this, which I, with, I believe, a majority. And, you know, we, these are the questions, guys, that are great, and it's wonderful that everyone's speaking up, because these will be asked at town meeting. And so it's great to think about it and brainstorm here, because it sounds like, you know, a lot of time and energy and consultants' money, the town is spending a lot of taxpayers' money to work on the plan, and you don't want to get to town meeting and then fail. So we really need to think about what the residents and what everyone wants. And I think I think we're doing that. And I think that's why we need to talk about this. And I think if once it's explained, I think people, you know, will will be more, I think it'll be more successful if it's explained that, okay, we're still gonna keep the character of this historic downtown. It's very unique here. And how do we do that? And how do we also meet the state guidelines of creating more housing for this, this, you know, this task of ours?
So with that, it sounds to me like for your meeting, the Z RAC meeting, to all the members who are on here tonight, having the maps available for you, having the results of the models available for you, and maybe just some guidance about, you know, the impacts of one district versus another might be helpful to guide your conversations, provide you with the additional information. Does that sound, am I hearing that correctly?
For me, yes, thank you. I know it's a lot of work to do this, but I think if we can look at the calculations and, you know, if we can remove the buildings that are already protected under the central business district historic map, why, why not try? And then maybe you come back and say, although that doesn't work and we have to rejiggle, but if it works and we can still do it and meet this one thousand two hundred and twenty unit number, let's try. And then I think, I think everyone will be happy.
So we will work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if you can hear me, but I, I second that. Because we need to be working with all as much of, you know, exact information as possible. You know, and those, 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 those maps are going to be a key part of that. Thanks.
I'll be happy to work on those. And I will apologize that I have to jump off, but I, among my clients is a rapid transit community and they're having their city council. and they're having their city council public hearing on the zoning tonight. So I would not leave for anything less, but city council and planning board public hearings sort of take precedence over other things because of the requirements for publicizing those. So Jimmy and I and the rest of our team will continue to work on those maps and those and the implication of those. Jimmy's gonna stay on just so he can take further notes if anything else comes up during the discussion. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We now have to return to the planning board for our brief opening and continuation of our waterfield lot hearing. So can I get a motion to open the hearing on the waterfield lot CBD petition number eighteen, please? Is there, oh, there is a second, roll call though, please, Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Yee Ching?
Hi.
I say I as well. Taylor, you want to bring us up to speed as to why we're having such a short continuation?
So the continuing for Waterfield, one, it's mostly short because we had hoped that, well, I guess not hoped, we, we we scheduled it just in case our our design peer review would be finished for today. But that is not going to be finished for today. We will have that, we plan on having that partially presented or the initial findings presented on January ninth. And then we can determine how we want to move on from, from, from that meeting.
Okay, and and we did get the, we did get the check. So unlike last time, there is no delay in getting our consultant on board. So let us reschedule this hearing, or I should say, continue this hearing to a date certain, which will be January ninth. Do we have a ZRAC meeting on that day, Taylor? Because I I seem to always confuse which days.
I don't believe that we've scheduled any ZRAC meetings for the new, after the new year.
Okay, so let us assume that we will be able to open that hearing up again, January the ninth at seven thirty. Could I get a motion to continue this meeting until then?
So move.
Okay, we have a first and a second roll call though, please. Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Yee Ching?
Annie.
Nick?
Hi.
And I say I as well. So now let us go right back into the ZRAC. Thanks for putting up with that. So next up, we're gonna spend all of our time talking about North Main Street. We've got Michael Wang here to ask questions. I don't think, Michael, you have any presentations, right? You're just here to.
I actually do have a presentation.
Then go right ahead.
Okay, sounds good. Nice to see everyone. And it was nice to have a chance to meet some of you in person at the community meeting, finally. I I have to apologize if I don't have my A game tonight. I have just gotten out of the car after driving four days straight across country and I'm currently in Montana. I got here about an hour and a half ago. But I have been piecing together something along the way and I'd love to to share this with you. I assume Taylor, I can share my screen.
You should.
All right, here we go. All right, hopefully everything will cooperate. Thanks to Elon Musk. So anyway, let's shift gears to North Main and essentially here, I've got three topics that I'd like to touch on tonight. The first is to share with you all comments that were received by post-its on the boards that were presented on the easels at the last in-person community meeting. And then we can sort of distill those down a little bit, which I think seemed to be generally supportive of the feedback I've heard via Taylor on the ZRAC discussions recently. Then the second part of the presentation will be reviewing the map that Taylor sent that was generated by the ZRAC looking at different ideas for subzones and the characteristics that folks would like to see in those. And then I was asked if I could to to put together a couple of visualizations to give examples of changes to zoning and how that might impact the. I'm sorry? I thought somebody was, if somebody's unmuted, then I thought they said my name. But anyway. So anyway, I'm gonna, I will share a couple of visualizations. I'm also going to try to go through a couple of diagrams that talk about FAR, open space and height and how they impact density against the abs. Morning, I said, but I think it's helpful if we can get on the same page about that. So that's my, that's my approach. Let's start with the first part here and feel free to interject if if something comes up along the way. So this was the first of the five boards and it was focused largely on density and trying to solicit feedback on you know, what, what, how how dense would people feel comfortable with and and looking at different typologies and 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 how that translates based on sites. So here are the transcribed post-it notes. You see a list on the right-hand side there. I've highlighted three bullet points here, which I think kind of provides a good synopsis of the feedback in general. It seemed like people were open to height flexibility, which I found encouraging. A number of people said four stories seemed okay. There was even one that said potentially five-story with if there are set step backs on the upper levels. And I think in general, people were more comfortable from my conversations with this at the southern end from Clark down to Skilling's. And people will want to make sure that in other locations that we were stepping down to the scale of the neighborhoods that abut. As far as density, there were a number of comments. People felt more comfortable with the eighteen to thirty dwelling unit per acre range, which was represented by the top row on the boards. When we got into the forty to fifty range, part of it, I think, might have been the the particular buildings and how they're they're articulated architecturally. But because there were some favorable comments on the center image on the board at the bottom, which is a rendering we did for a project in Paul. But in any case, that gives you a starting point for some of the feedback of what people found was not threatening. Hand in hand with that, I think the idea of a build-to line was was something that was raised in a number of contexts. And I, I think that's a a great aspect. A criteria that gets buildings up on the street away from the rear of butters and you know, tends to shift parking to the rear and and helps define streetscapes. So that was sort of positive feedback, I thought, on ideas about density and site planning. Quickly on the ideas here about integrating mixed use on the ground floor. The comments, not surprisingly to me, were generally all favor favorable towards the idea of active mixed use with ground floor commercial because of its impact on creating vibrant streetscapes, again, parking in the back. It was interesting that a number of people felt that having the retail on the ground, the commercial on the ground floor, either as part of mixed use or individually, that that seemed like having it more nodal as a, and clustered potentially on corners, block corners, as opposed to being continuous along the corridor seemed more favorable to people. So and that 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 if you had the mixed use at the corners, let's just say, for example, at the corner of Swanton and North Main, that when you move more into the mid-block areas, that that might be more residentially focused and the commercial would be in nodes. A lot of comments throughout this about bearing utility lines, which is consistent with some of the factors we've been talking about related to complete streets. So just to keep moving along here, comments regarding the design guidelines, framework and the examples that I showed of some of the the sheets that we put together for the city of Newton. Again, build-two lines was a very popular idea, but elaborated on here as with limited gaps. So people wanted to see a lot of continuity in the streetscape with less opportunity to look through block, you know, obviously to see parking and other things beyond. There was a comment I thought was good about the ground floor appearance on the building is the most important. This is definitely something that we emphasized in Newton, in the Newton projects that we worked on, because it's it's the most tangible. It's up close and you know, ideas about transparency. All that creates the the sort of vibrant environment at the street level. Parking in the rear with and and ideas about reducing heat islands, which talks more favorably about reducing parking requirements to perhaps integrate more green space. That that seemed to appear in a in a few locations here. And then contextual architecture, very important with nice, as I said, nice facade articulation. So you'll see that as we get farther into this discussion. And then the fourth board out of five was talking about parking. We showed, we had examples of how Newton and Arlington had reduced in their MBTA communities bylaws going down to zero parking. And I was curious to see how people react to that. And we've had ideas about how that's beneficial in terms of development and open space and a number of things, pedestrian environments. So the the feedback was generally favorable to reducing parking, to reducing the minimum parking requirements and many both in their posted comments and in in conversation said that they were in favor of going to zero. And that was coupled largely with the idea of let the market decide. So the owner, developer, whoever, you know, wouldn't necessarily do this the zero, but to have the flexibility and then they can decide what is appropriate for their particular mix of uses. There also was some interest in the idea of maximum parking limits, which of course goes back to the idea of creating more open space usable, green space, et cetera, and less paved areas, even if located behind buildings. And then in conjunction with that, incorporating alternative transportation, accommodation, zip cars, bikes, et cetera, all that is a logical coupling with reducing parking. The last board was, I hope this is useful, but the the last board was talking about, I wanted to try to get some feedback on evolution of 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 the corridor as it moves from south of Clark and closer to the CBD up towards the Woburn Line. And did people think that it it was, it was quite different? And obviously, this, I think, sponsored some of the feedback from the ZRAC with the mapping that was very useful, which we'll go to next. But just a quick synopsis here, people were generally in favor of the corridor evolving from north to south. There wasn't much articulation of how, but I think you can read between the lines when you look at the other comments in terms of where they'd like to see height and massing and density, et cetera. There was some concern expressed about increased traffic and issues of parking with, if there were additional large mixed-use projects, particularly if they were continuous up the corridor as opposed to more nodal. And I, so I'm just bringing that to light as well. And again, utility lines were mentioned in many contexts here. So that's sort of the first section. I hope that's helpful just to try to distill that down a little bit. And again, I think it's consistent with feedback we've gotten from other sources to date. Regarding the ZRAC feedback that Taylor passed on to me, let's look at that quickly here. This is a graphic that I put together building on the map that Taylor forwarded to me. It's, which had pop-ups, but I've I've transcribed them here. And very interesting to look at again here, your thoughts on four stories and the higher density mixed-use active ground floor towards the south end of the corridor. And then I sort of picked up on a difference between the east and west side here and things generally getting a little more medium to low density as you move up the corridor. And a little bit of checkerboarding on where people thought retail might be integrated, but generally seemed like there were the thoughts were more smaller scale retail as opposed to larger mixed-use projects that you might find at the south end. And so here's a little synopsis that I did that kind of grouped these seven actually into three, just trying to simplify a little bit, but this surely doesn't need to happen this way. If you look at the the CBD maps, you know, there are multiple subzones there with the North Core, Town Common, East Core and Museum sub-districts. So this is not to say we have to go this route, but I did feel like the the east zone one and the west zone one at the southern end, you seem like you were looking for a similar approach there. So I I, in light blue, I sort of speculated at what high density might seem like based on feedback and and based on the opportunity to create more density down toward closer to the MBTA station. And then looking quickly at the the northeast, the east zone two and east zone three, which are 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 split here with the Russell Court area. It seemed like high to medium density residential was your recommendation as opposed to on the west side, these three narrower parcels. It seemed like there was maybe a more medium to lower density seemed appropriate. And I'm I'm guessing that has to do with the the adjacency to the the residential neighborhoods to the west. So three stories generally, it seemed above Clark was your current thinking and then four to the south. So let's keep going here. Okay, so this is my last section and then I obviously want to save time for your feedback, but I have the two visualizations that I I was asked to do, but I I'm gonna take a stab at this and and I FAR floor area ratio is 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 a thing that some people get it and it's really straightforward and others kind of glaze over. So I I'm gonna just take a quick pass here at it helping or trying to explain how floor area ratio, open space and height all work together to allow certain densities. And I'm, this could be kind of a popsicle headache, but I'm gonna give it a shot. And we can always circle back and talk about it in more detail, either offline or whatever. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show you a series of diagrams here that are based on a one-acre lot. Keep it very simple, forty-three thousand, five hundred and change. And so if you have a one-point-O FAR, that means that that is the amount of square footage you can have for a buildable area, forty-three, five, sixty. And I apologize to people who this is very obvious too, but it's not for all. So here's a diagram, the yellow diagram that is a three-floor, you know, potential footprint. And in order to make it work as a in the one-point-O FAR, it would have to be essentially a third of the site. So you're having, you know, a three-story building that is a third of the site and therefore you have the same square footage that you have. If you had a one-story building that covered the whole site. But that kind of dimensions, a one-fifty by ninety-six, for example, is not really a kind of dimensions you'd find for residential. So residential, you know, particularly multifamily kind of residential, you would find being more in the sixty to sixty-five foot width. So that changes the shape of the footprint that you have. So with the the one-point-O FAR here and the allowable building footprint, if you have a three-story building, which is a third of the area would be fourteen thousand, five hundred feet. And I I, just the point being that if with three stories, this shows you what the resulting open space, lot coverage and potential frontage buildout could be for a three-story building in a one-point-O FAR. And so those, those are important to look at. When you go to a four-story, which is the blue diagram, again, this shows you, you get it, you can get a smaller footprint, obviously, because you're now dividing by the four stories. And therefore you get more open space, less lot coverage for the building footprint. And in this eight case, less a frontage buildout. But what's really important is how this translates to density. And so that's what I'd like to just touch on here quickly. And so whenever you are trying to figure out density, there are assumptions that need to be made, such as what is the average unit size that you're dealing with? So translating this sort of excuse me, translating the one-point-O FAR to density requires an assumption. And in this case, a good practice is to use a thousand square feet per unit. And that is essentially, you know, you might have one bedrooms other in the eight hundred range to eight fifty. You might have two. You might have two bedrooms that are eleven hundred plus to twelve hundred. So when you average out, you know, again, it has to do with unit size and unit mix. But all this is to say that with a one point O F A R, you generally would get around thirty five dwelling units per acre as a density. Okay, so now I'm gonna not go through this next one in as much detail. But just to explain that when you move up to a one point two five F A R, and I'm also gonna show you one point five. When you move to one point two five F A R, that means that you're now your your one acre lot, which is forty three thousand five hundred. You can now build one point two five times that, which is fifty four thousand four fifty. So that means you increase your building footprint, you're reducing your open space, you're getting more lot coverage, you're having an opportunity for more frontage buildout. They're all interconnected, but importantly, off to the right here. And you can see the difference in footprints between the three story and the four story, the four story being the blue. It gives you more open space again. So the density calculations here, again, using the same set of assumptions. You end up with forty three dwelling units per acre using a one point two five F A R. And then lastly, going to a one point five, which is what is the current as of right in the CBD. You see now your allowable building area goes up to sixty five thousand plus on a one acre lot. And you can see the footprint gets quite large in the yellow on a three story building. And the blue on a four story building, if it's a bar building, it it allows you almost to get the the frontage defined. But again, you could do a C shaped building and have less. But probably most importantly, just for your quick reference here, the dwelling units per acre or density. In a one point five, it would might yield fifty two dwelling units per acre using the same criteria. So you can see it makes sense because the one point O is thirty five and the one point five is one and a half times that. You get fifty two dwelling units per acre. So I think that is kind of the, you know, the upper end of what we've been talking about potentially in the south of Clark world. And of course, there's that one little note on the upper right there below the dwelling is acre equal thirty five. If a developer is using larger units, then the dwelling units per the density goes down a little bit. If the dweller, the developer is using smaller units, like say eight hundred as an average. Then the the density go can go up. So that's another factor, but in general, I think a thousand is a good benchmark. And you can see the relative densities that can be achieved based on the F A R. Now, there will be some tweaks that that's based on the F A R and the different the heights. The heights don't actually impact the density unless there's life, that's getting a little bit too in into the weeds, so I'm not gonna go there. So so that's just a just a quick overview, I hope that was helpful and not too confusing, but I just wanted to get that off my chest. And so now I'd like to just share these two visualizations that we were asked to produce. And so the two I'm gonna show you, you can see on the map there, visualization number one is gonna be one of the larger parcels. That we did a test fit on last year on the south of Clark area. It's actually in the east zone one. And then I'm gonna contrast that by showing you a visualization north of Swanton on the west side. On one of the narrower sites and smaller. So that will be more likely conducive to a townhouse world as opposed to the south of Clark. Which was, you know, could be the multifamily comfortably. So here we go. This is visualization number one. These are the test fits we did last year and I'm just highlighting that there were different approaches to the the Clark street. It's at the top here where my cursor is in the center, if you can see that, the skilling's at the bottom. And so we did different approaches to the parcel that I'm I'm gonna talk about as the one highlighted in red here for this first visualization. And interesting to point out that you can see the parcel across the street from that. We had a number of different approaches that ranged from townhouses to fourplexes. Those are the kinds of things we'll be looking at on the narrower sites. But so going to the original test fit, we had again made some assumptions. In order to test density and mixed use and parking and how it all worked together. So this original test fit assumptions, we were looking at a three story mixed use equation here. So on the image in the middle here, the large image, the red areas represent street front retail on Main Street. And then the blue at the ground level here represents residential lobby and amenity space and a few units in the back. And you can see here, there's a lot of street frontage covered here and the parking is all on grade in the rear. And this is completely parked based on the CBD parking ratios. Okay, so that's the point seven five spaces per dwelling unit and same for the retail here. And again, you can see assumptions that we made about unit sizes and unit mix. But the long and short of it is that this three story mixed use, so with ground floor retail yielded thirty four dwelling units per acre. In that iteration, what the visualization is going to do is it's gonna bump that up to the four stories. Because I think that's gonna be helpful to see in the visualization. So we'll have a four story mixed use and what this results in is a hundred and twenty six units instead of the eighty eight units we had in the original one. Because we're getting a whole nother upper floor of units, okay? So the CBD parking ratios will will be utilized and they can be accommodated. I will gonna point out one more thing down here at the bottom. If this were to be purely a multifamily development and not have the mixed use. Which is something that is gonna be allowed as of right by the three A zoning and this area. You know, you know, potentially has that aspect on it as well. If it were to be purely multifamily and didn't have the ground floor retail, you could be reaching levels of a hundred and forty eight. Units and fifty seven dwelling units per acre. So that's just as a as a reference. I think with a mixed use four story, we're looking at about fifty dwelling, it's forty nine fifty dwelling units. So let's look at the visualization here. Well, these are a couple of images that I had shown before of again, this is a project that we did some renderings for down in Hall. And just to give you a sense of a three story at the lower right here with slope roofs and ground floor retail. That is what a fully rendered three story mixed use building might look like. And then the upper right here is a four story with a mansard upper level, three levels of residential above ground floor retail. So that's similar to what we we're gonna look at here. So here is a new rendering along North Main Street. This is based on a a new three D model that we built. And then my partner John Ruffo did a sketch overlay on it, which is kind of his specialty. And you can see here techniques for, you know, breaking down the scale. And dealing with architectural articulation and buildings that are quite, you know, substantial here with the four levels, three levels of residential. Above one level of commercial and lobby space. So let's look at how this, what what are the the variables that go into articulating a building of that scale? And so going back to looking at the design guidelines framework, we have ideas like base, middle and top. Major and minor volumes, architectural elements and fenestration, et cetera. So when you look at a rendering like this, which is zoomed in now a little bit and think about ideas of base, middle and top. Okay, that goes a long way towards helping with the scale. And and then obviously you have these sections of the building stepping back from the streets. So you don't have, it's just incredibly long, you know, unarticulated facade. That you have a little bit of movement and it breaks down the scale in that direction. And then it's the the devil is in the details, so it's the addition of elements such as balconies. How how does, how do entries happen along the street? Are they frequent enough to make for an active streetscape? And this isn't showing all the transparency, these are just locations for entry potential, potentially. And then, you know, other elements such as canopies and how do you begin to distinguish between a residential entrance? And the retail uses. And you'll notice that this building, and this was largely because of the the test fit and all the variables that we were dealing with. We simplified the geometry, so it actually resulted, because the the street is curving here, it actually resulted in some open space. In front of the retail area or restaurant area here. So, you know, this is the idea of a build to line, how much do you want to allow buildings of this scale to set back from the street? Do you want to have places where there's opportunities for, you know, outdoor dining or other uses that aren't in the walk zone of the sidewalk? So these are things that we can bring along with us in the discussion as we go. So that's one, I hope that's helpful. And now here the second, and this is my final one, which is the a look at a narrower parcel or conglomeration of parcels. And this is parcel five from our north study here, which is a just about an acre. And you can see it's actually a four parcels put together. And it's just, this is Hemingway Street here and North Main, so it's on the corner there. And these, this was the the original test fit that we did last year. And some against an imaging that we had taken precedent from another project. But you can see here, the assumptions were three story townhouses with two units in each of those buildings. Parking ratios were generously accommodated here. It actually, you could park two per unit in this particular configuration. But you also could have more open space, which would be quite nice as you transition to the neighborhood. And so with the visualization, we kind of used this as the go by. Thinking about having the the townhouses up on the street and creating the frontage definition there that we're looking for. It's a kind of a liner building for the neighborhood. There was a setback, again, flexibility on parking ratios. And the idea that parking might be accessed from the side street wherever possible, I think, is generally thought of as favorable to not have curb cuts along North Main. So, oh, and this is one more before I go into the into the visualization. This, these are actually more like townhouses as opposed to, we've shown images before of things that are mixed use. For townhouse feel with ground for retail. But in this case, this is purely a residential townhouse. And it and we found this project down in Providence, Rhode Island, which I think it's it's remarkable in it in its similarity. Site from a site perspective, you imagine in the aerial view at the bottom here, that this is North Main where my cursor is and with that's Hemingway. You know, you could imagine, you know, that scale of a building or row houses. And and you can see it's budding up to a neighborhood that has houses that are not dissimilar in scale to what you all have there. So here's here's the rendering based on the, again, on the the three D model that we did. And you can see, you know, ideas about breaking the block here for pedestrian passageways. And that that therefore even the full block of the five townhouses in this instance has a reasonable scale. But there are a lot of things that are done to make these feel, you know, also architecturally articulated as individual townhouses. And you can see behind there, you know, a few of the the abutting properties along the corridor here are are actually two families. So that that even further helps with the scale adjustment. But I'm gonna show again, a little bit of diagramming here. Here's the idea of base, middle and top again, with the slope roof dormers at the top. And so these, and then but here with the exposed party walls, you can see again, that idea of breaking down the scale visually. In both directions, if you will, horizontally and vertically. And then as I showed in the other one, the, you know, the real devil is in these details, the dormers, there's some shed dormers on the back. These gable dormers on the front, and then you have things, opportunities for things at the street level like entry porches with stairs. Or you could have lineal porches like you have in that eight unit project I've shown on the corner of Hill and North Main. But anyway, that's just to give you a feeling for the types of things that we're imagining. We will be trying to have the design guidelines and zoning reflect that in certain locations, you're having buildings of this scale. Whereas in other locations, you have opportunities for more density and height and and bulk. So I'm gonna stop there. Sorry, I talked too much.
Thanks, Michael. So to the Z-Rack, the floor reserves.
They're stunned. Michelle, you should be able to unmute.
Hey, Michael, thank you, this is Michelle McCarthy. Just wanna throw out, I like the houses. I think that since that's a neighborhood, I think that people there have really expressed a lot of concerns about. You know, all the changes and it is a neighborhood and I just liked that design a lot, so I just wanted to point that out. I think that the the four story feels huge, but were you saying that would be on the right side? Like, I was a little bit confused on exactly what you're saying.
Yes, Michelle, that that was, that would have to be on the east side, because that's where the the deeper sites are. That that is, that is trying to maximize what can be done on that site. So I'm sure there are lots of approaches that wouldn't be so, but that's sort of giving you the worst case scenario if if you feel like that bulk is a worst case. But but again, a lot of the goal of this exercise, you know, as I understand it, for as an evolving opportunity area. Is to really diversify housing options and to increase density in a place where it's a good location and good proximity to the core. And having the mixed use commercial was to do a lot for activating the ground plane and all those things I mentioned. So I I do think if there's a place for it, it is that south of Clark world.
Okay. And how how do we get feedback from the community only? I know we had that one meeting and it was great turnout, but. Something I've heard again and again, and it sounds like we're not able to do this with the zoning, is that there's really no housing. This came up at one of our recent Z-Rack meetings with some realtors actually, who said, we have people who want to sell their homes, but they don't want to move out of town. Like older folks that are retired and they don't want to live in the larger home, they love to downsize, but they're, you know. So I'm, I just think like some, it's almost like we need to hear from them, like, would they rather be in those townhouses? Or would they rather be like in a four story, really large building?
Yeah, I would bet you you get both. And I think you're right on with the demographic is the the empty nester. It's also the young professional who doesn't have a family yet, established and and those those demographics, you know, I think. Enjoy being within walking distance of the core and the station and and perhaps less car dependent than a a family of four or five. But yeah, so it's just a, it's it's a different model for housing that I think would be complimentary to what you have in your community, so.
Is there parking for every, like, does each unit have a spot with both examples?
There was more than enough parking in those particular renderings that I did on on the large one. I was using the CBD ratios. On the townhouses one, if you recall, I was, I actually had, there were actually two spaces per dwelling unit shown there. Which is probably more than you would necessarily need to do.
But on the larger one, I I guess I don't know everything about parking, sorry, I just keep hearing people saying that they really wouldn't buy something without parking. In the larger example, does each unit have at least a spot or no?
Well, you know, I think the idea is with the zoning, I mean, I think ideally, and this is what's happening in a lot of these forward thinking communities. The Newtons and Arlington's and others, is that you allow it to be market driven. And so if the minimum is is actually made to be zero, for example, as it is in those two communities in their MBTA districts. Then it's it's up to the developer, if he thinks he can't sell a unit without having at least one parking space dedicated per unit. I mean, then that's what he'll build, but I, you know, everything's moving towards unbundling parking from from units. And so it's there's just, there's lots of incentives for for working through those issues. And I did honestly hear some comments from some of the neighbors down Clark Street, I think it was. Saying that, you know, they they are concerned about parking on streets. So anyway, that that's a balance that has to be found, but.
Okay, so it sounds like the larger one does not have a parking for each unit, but it's really kind of the up to the developer and the market. Okay, thank you. Thanks for showing the pictures.
Okay.
I had a question about the choice to combine the kind of smaller districts that we had into these bigger. Like these bigger blocks. I guess I'm I'm looking at it now, I think the main reason we were separating was just because this trend that we, as you mentioned. That we're moving down, like downsizing as we move north and also downsizing as we move west. I'm curious about like what the pros and cons are of like creating three different zones. As opposed to being more piecemeal about it.
Well, I have to admit, Tommy, that that was just simply me trying to get my head around it and looking. Just simply me trying to get my head around it and looking at the criteria that you guys. Put forward and, and which is actually summarized on this slide. And seeing that essentially your West Zone One and your West Zone and your East Zone One were essentially the same thing, four stories. Mixed use, high density, ground floor, retail, street activation. So I guess I, I was just combining things that seemed similar to me, but there's no magic to it. You, if you want more subtlety and, and, and having seven districts, that can be done.
Yeah, I think the main difference between West and East that we talked about last week was the need for, as you mentioned, the need to. Be adaptive to the, the neighborhoods that are behind the West that don't often exist on the east side. But now looking at, I think that's with West. Zone one and East Zone one, there's. Not, there's not, there's no really neighborhoods behind on each side, but I remember some, we were mentioning. Worries about West Zone One, like the height being as like. I think we were talking about. Higher than West and West Zone One, so I was curious if anyone. Else on Z-Rack was felt passionately about like. Not combining those two sides, because I think the other ones that we combined kind of along the. Like the, the other two combinations make sense to me, but I was curious about. If that West Zone One height concern that we talked about last week was still a concern.
If I may jump in, Michael, that's excellent. I think you've gone further than I expected you to get in a short time. I think the, the basic concept of breaking the area down into smaller zones. And then developing a vision for what you want in each one. Makes good sense, and I think we've done that. I think the opportunity for Xerac is to look. As Tommy suggested, at all seven of those and decide, in fact, if those are. If they, if all seven make sense, should it be combined? Should they be detailed? Should they be subdivided further? I mean, those are, those are a first cut, and I think. The map that Taylor has done is a really good first cut at it, but it warrants some more discussion. The second question that Tommy asks is, could you differentiate between east and west? I think so. And that gets back to your earlier slide of what's the vision for each of those districts? And I don't think we've had, we didn't finish the discussion last time with any great detail on that. So I think that's wide open, at least in my mind, for much more discussion. I think the, the other thing that, and I don't know about the mechanics of this. But, or the cost of doing it, but I think the extremely valuable thing then would be to go to basically. Take a perspective that's much higher up on the street and see if one can put some of your, at least at a wire diagram level. Can fit some of these conceptual buildings into parcels, so you can see them in a context of. You know, a whole zone or a whole section of the street. That may or, may or not be, may or may not be very easy to do. Yes, exactly, yeah, do that. And then I think a piece of that that is really up for the. Maybe the planning board, the N to do is to basically say. If we put. Buildings up that fit the test fits. You're going to have an awful lot of building up there, and that's probably a possibility, but not likely, not probable. So I guess the question is, can we develop a street view? Showing some of these wire diagram buildings that put the. That developed the lots that are most likely to turn over in the next ten to fifteen years. I was reading through Milton's presentation earlier this evening where they put a good deal of time up front. Trying to differentiate between what's available in zoning and what's available in actual development, you know, what's, what's the. What's the zoning permit versus what was actually get built? And I think that it would be very easy, both in presentations and in town meeting. For those two to get mixed, for people to assume that what's allowed in zoning is what we're actually going to see on the ground. And I think we want to basically at some point say, you know, what you're seeing in zoning. And what you could see as a probable development pattern are somewhat different and present at least the first. Go around to say, here's what you're likely to see given development. Conditions in the next five, 10, 15 years, because. People will otherwise look at it and say, good God, you know, we're gonna wall it, it's gonna look like a New York Avenue before we're done. Which is probably not the case financially, but. But a, but a rap on it, excellent. I think this is beginning to translate the ideas. Into something that people can visualize in the town meeting and others could understand. There's a lot of work to be done, I'm afraid, in convincing the neighborhoods and the building owners, property owners that these are. Will benefit them, but that's, that's the planning board's next task, I assume. But anyway, it's, it's been quite good progress. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lance.
Taylor, can I just add that the, the M A T C in their 2021 study did have a diagram that showed parcels that are. Likely to turn over in various timeframes, so that could be a starting point which you guys could use as a reference and refine based on. Inside information you might have, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, I saw that, that's what triggered the idea, and I think that's a wonderful task for the planning board who will be beaten up roundly for picking the wrong parcel. In each case, so.
Thank you. Wendy, go ahead.
Thanks, Michael. Excellent presentation. And regarding Tommy's question about the difference. Between East Zone One and West Zone One, personally, I don't really see it. Like we have to make that two sides different. Looking at the map. There are actually not much residential behind. Both sides of the parcel. And for such a small area, I would in favor to. Consolidate this instead of having like subtle difference between each one. I'm also in favor of having some type of setbacks at certain notes. Instead of having like just a straight. Sidewalk and that setback can be like a small community garden or. Outdoor dining, outdoor cafe and really make the neighborhood more vibrant. Like when we, we all love like European towns. And the street can be quite narrow, but the charm is always like you have some open up space with a small plaza. And a lot of activities can happen there. I'm also wondering. In your. Your like block test, where the green space can be. Cause I know like for. Young people who moved to Winchester, if they, they can't afford a single family, at least they probably want like a small. Backyard that can be shared and they can do barbecues together with the neighbors. Maybe they can be on the backside of the, the building. So instead of just purely parking, can we? Oh yeah, I see the green space now.
Some active space here, there's some outdoor many space here, but, but you're right, it would be nice to. Have less paved surface if, if that's acceptable. And I, and Wendy, I agree with you so much about the idea of these through block pedestrian connections and. One of my, or, or actually two of my absolute favorite. New England towns that have these, these pedestrian mews are conquered on a smaller scale. And then Portsmouth, New Hampshire has just these marvelous back alleys that are. Enlivened because the, the simple move of having the retail storefronts turn the corner and go just to, at least even get the bay down the alleys. It just, those are such marvelous spaces, yeah.
Right, and also. Winchester has some like, I don't know, bike, bike ways and some. Like green corridors, like if there's a, a scheme that we can tie up some of that. And I don't know, like the overlay with the main street corridor may be interesting. To look at. So it can encourage more. Like intertwined with nature.
I've been working with the theory that. This is gonna be. Essentially amendments to your underlying zoning, but. You, I, obviously now just have the G B D two and the G B D three. So if it ends up that you're going to seven new districts. It's gonna be a bit of a transition from a, a zoning writing perspective and to get the guidelines to come along with that, though I, I don't know, I guess. We'll have to continue to track that as you guys formulate your ideas about each area.
We definitely have. A lot of policy questions to ask. I do want to remind everyone that the, the zoning map. Is, is public and you can go on and create comments. You can write on it, you can review it. The, the email sent December seventh. With the title, North Main Street Visioning Map, you can go in and, you know, play around with it, so. Just, just so that everyone knows, it's there so that you can all see.
I guess just perspective, I would note that. While going from two to seven. Will require some copying and pasting and creating dimension tables and such like that. The experience when we set out in two thousand and five or six to redo the CBD zoning. And then work our way up North Main Street was basically to. Use the lessons learned from the CBD exercise. To make it streamlined and minimize the amount of effort it was going to take to do the. G B D two and G B three North Main Street rezoning. But one of the things we fell into and learned was that in order to. Address all the people's concerns, we in fact had to break down the CBD into a lot of subzones. And you see that today in the zoning that's out there. And I'm not yet exactly, you know, and it was a headache. But the value of a word processing program where you can cut and paste was invaluable. But it also addressed each individual area, each individual neighborhood's vital concerns about. Look and feel, about preservation, about open space. And it was key to getting the town meeting to agree to the whole thing, so. Although, you know, it may be that we could do a five, six or seven on North Main Street, but. Addressing the concerns of the community and being able to tailor your design. To rather different sections of that street is, I think, very important to convincing people that's something they like. And would like to do. We learned that lesson the hard way, so in the CBD.
I was assuming that was a good kickoff point, the CBD package, the. The design review guidelines, however, aren't, aren't specific, right, per each. Subdistrict there, it's, it's really just the, the zoning criteria that are. So that's interesting.
Correct, yes. But there's, in that case, the zoning, the design guidelines were meant to be fairly general. But we also at the time gave the planning board great discretion over how to implement those. But it was the folk, the design guidelines were focused on keeping the scale, the massing and the design characteristics of the downtown. Reasonably intact, but letting it evolve gracefully.
And as, as we work on refining our, our MBTA. Compliance model and how, and what our CBD district. Looks like, just everyone keep in mind that the more we move from, we, we remove from the CBD. The larger buildings will have to be in, in other districts. So it's, it's just, it's just something to, to keep in, to keep in mind. As, as, as we move forward.
And one other comment about that, Taylor, in particular, since the CBD. Is, is balancing, it's providing a lot of the, inside the half mile radius that is required, the. Percentage be within that distance. There's an opportunity to have that southern part of North Main. Potentially balance that, if you can get your head around larger density there.
Can you give us an example? If we don't do anything to the central CBD, how many more starries would the North? Main corridor be? Will that increase like one starry on most of the parcels or two? Just want to get that like rough idea.
I think that's. Jimmy, you and Emily and I could put our heads together and come up with a theory there, but it's based on so many variables, but. I don't know, I wouldn't want to say anything off the cuff.
Yeah, we'd have to do a lot of research. I could definitely write that down and think about that for you, Wendy.
Thanks.
I guess.
Do we have a, off the. Do we know how much, like if we don't develop? Kind of the down, if we don't include the downtown area in this three A, do you know how much we? How much we like need to gain in other areas? Like what the trade off is there?
I think I, I might be, Taylor, you want to jump in or I'll jump, sorry.
Yeah, Tommy, we, we were just, we were just mentioning that, so, so there's a lot of data that, that goes into. Into knowing that, so the best way that we can determine what. The best way that we can determine that is that we know what the, what the minimum area we need in the, in, in the CBD. We're gonna have to include something in, in the CBD. It's, it, it's not going to be possible for us to, to comply without using some of that area. If we know what the minimum area is, we can then say, okay, where can we put the rest of the, rest of the area and, and density in? In the, in the rest of. Of either the half mile radius or outside of the half mile radius. Yet just remember that half of all the. Dwelling units have to be within the half mile, so there's a lot of opportunity to put it in the, in the G B D two section, so between the, the rotary. And, and skillings. But in order to achieve. The required density in the half mile while focusing on that section, those, those buildings will have to be quite, quite large.
Makes sense, yeah. Also a clarifying question, so it's, it's just below Clark, the line is between the half mile radius, right? That's right.
Lance, you had a question?
I guess, Michael, you had an early slide that showed the seven areas and the callouts. Could you bring that up again? So I guess the, the question that I have, and this is really the question to the. Planning board and the consultants is. Your description of each of these zones, for example, East, East Zone Three Residential Medium Density, three stories. Does that reflect your best guess and the planning board's best guesses, what you've been hearing? From the community over the last year or so that you've been working on this? What we, what we scratched out on the paper late night at the end of our last meeting was a really rough ballpark, and I don't. For those of us, particularly in my case, I haven't been working on this area for a very long time. I don't really know what the. Community is thinking about. I think one of the questions would be, is there refinement to these descriptions that? You folks should bring to these callouts. That we can work with. I mean, so, some of the, some of the Z-Rack folks. Live and work in that area, so they have a good sense of what goes on, but I would guess. Is this, is this our sketch, your sketch, or the best of both at this point?
I can actually answer that, Lance. So this is, this is based off of conversation, the, on the conversation that we had with Z-Rack last week. And other conversations that I ha, I've had with the members of, of the community. In order to get this presentation done for today, we use kind of just a rough draft of what this can be. We fully understand that this can adapt over time and this can change, and we want to hear back from, from, from the community, what, what does work and what doesn't work. We're, we're fully prepared to use this as a jumping off point. We really just wanted to. To have something visual for, for someone to, for people to see and set, set expectations.
Okay, good, that's, that's fine. I, I think that would be very helpful. Before the next Z-Rack meeting, if, if you had a chance, you and others in the planning board had a chance to refine these statements or these vision. Notes, rather than our waving our hands around and wondering what the neighborhoods are thinking to be. To be as detailed as you can about what you've heard, that's. I would push forward on that because that will help then define what the zoning dimensions should be. Good, thank you.
Yeah, then thanks. That's a lot of work in a week. One quick reaction I have, I don't know what, I'm curious what others think. Is, should we get higher density when it's closer to Woben? Like easy three. It seems can get a little higher density there to me. Because I feel like the further away from the historic district. There probably have potential for a larger development.
Already, you already have fairly high density condos across street. And over the years, that neighborhood has always said we should be more residential and less high density. May have changed.
That is one of the gateway parcels really at your town line there. And it does have the easy three and easy two, both have, you know, substantial commercial components to them today. Uh, and they're, they're relatively deep sites compared to the, the west side. So, um, that may be Taylor, what you've heard no commercial and easy three. I, I don't know that, that, that may just be the opinion of a few. So I think you guys should develop a consensus about that.
Yep, yep, exactly. Just, just hearing, hearing from neighbors, hearing from people reading, reading reports and reading what people have said in, uh, town meetings in the past. Um, yeah, the, the, uh, that particular parcel is, is quite quite, quite interesting. But Wendy, to your point, it is a, it is a, it is an example of something that, 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 that could be higher density. Um, and something that, that, you know, we could, we could use, especially since it's up against the line. I do like that comment and I added it to the map for you.
Does, um, easy three, does, um, the ANCA exchange, which I believe is an easy three, does that count as co- a commercial use?
Do you mean if, if the building that's currently there is a, is a current commercial use building or is the zone?
I'm mainly wondering if like, I'm trying to imagine what would go in that parcel. And I'm realizing that like right now, what is in the parcel is a um, like nonprofit resale shop, the ANCA exchange. And so I'm, I guess there's both the question of like, if we do have commercial in that parcel, is that the kind of commercial that probably is going to attract into like, is it a bit, is it a big leap to go from having an ANCA exchange to like something that's way more commercial? I guess, because I'm, I'm just noting that there's, uh, it seems city commercially is already there. So I'm not sure if we need to restrict it to non-commercial.
Well, I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, half of that zone is filled up by the hospitals.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's commercial, although we don't get that much money from it.
Mm-hmm. Can I, can I suggest we put this up on Google Street View? Cause I think there's a little confusion about the, I don't believe ANCA is part of that parcel.
Yeah, I think it's further south.
Yeah. I believe easy three is just that corner lot with, uh, ten twenty Main Street and the, uh,
Do you have Google Earth or you want me to try to find it here, Taylor?
I, I can do it. I can do it.
Okay. All right. I'll stop sharing then.
Where are we looking?
I think that ANCA is the second parcel from cross right before the, um, the, the professional services building.
I, I.
That's what I see on Google Maps as well.
Ten twenty Main Street. Just look for ten twenty Main Street.
Um, ANCA is ten thirty seven.
Yeah, this, ANCA is actually, I believe is not part of this parcel. I think ANCA is in between the Russell Roads. U shaped road.
I'm, I'm having trouble finding it. I don't know.
Okay. Do you want me to share?
Well, um, we, it is eight thirty four. I just want to.
Yeah.
But the, the, I was surprised, um, for that, um, parcel where that, that section West, um, three to be no commercial as well, when there's so much commercial up there. And it is sort of a, a gateway Main Street.
And also last week, they had mentioned this very interesting idea to bring some like lab space or like, it can be like maker space or education space. And, um, robotics or whatever creative things we can think about. And that may be an interesting parcel for this type of thing. It's also large enough.
Yeah. So ANCA is not actually in that section.
But ANCA is the second house from cross.
That's right.
Yes, yes, it is.
That's correct. But the front port, well, they all have a front porch.
Oh, then I am totally wrong. I thought. How did ANCA get there?
They just are there.
I was just there a week ago.
But Wendy, I think, I feel like, I think that that particular parcel is one of the ones that M A P C sort of noted is not likely to change. That, I mean, it's.
Well, and the question would be, is it fits a historic structure?
Well, we also haven't included it in our initial zoning. So, um, but to, to the point of this conversation, I think we, we have more work to do on, on refining this and deciding what goes, what goes where. I think this is all good, good starting point, but I think that we need to kind of sit down together and look, and look at things. Say, what, what do we want? What do, don't, don't we want? Use more than just a, you know, an, an hour, an hour con- conversation, which is what we've had most, pretty much have made this out of, uh, so, so far. Use this as an, as another hour and see what, what, what we can get. Sally, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm on, oh, I do like, um, Lance's suggestion and I would, um, extend it to the planning board that the Z RAC and the planning board, um, separately or together, whatever, but I think probably separately decide on fleshing out the, the information in each of those squares for the different zones. And I also think that we should, if possible, have the fewest number of zones that we can, um, without compromising the concept of it being very granular in its treatment with the surrounding properties. So I do think the planning board and Z RAC can work on those, the language, the guiding statements in each of those boxes.
So I, I just want to point out something which I'd forgotten is that the planning board is going to be talking at nine fifteen this evening about both areas. Um, so we can, we can continue then. Um, I think we should, uh, we've, we've gone over about almost 10 minutes, which, but I think we've had a really great conversation. I know I promised everyone last week we'd get a chance to talk about, um, design guidelines. And I think that, um, that's, I think the next big issue that we really should think about, um, and maybe, um, we can start, I know, Michael, you have a large, a very dense slide with lots and lots of design guidelines. And maybe there's a way of bringing those visually to, so that people understand what they mean. But, um, I think that we should, we should think about providing some info for the Z RAC so we can start talking about the design guidelines. So.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to move that conversation with, um, for the planning board up so that we can move the minutes down? Um, since a lot of people are here talking about it, perhaps we can have this conversation. So, so some people who want to stay for it might be able to stay.
I think that would be a great idea. I just want to know, we do have a Z B A petition at, um, eight forty-five, and I don't know if there's someone here who is, um, interested in our, in is, is representing one of the parties. And that would be my only, um, question.
Hi there. I am, um, I'm here to represent ourselves, the petitioners.
So maybe, uh, what we could do is to take that up now very quickly and then, um, get back to the conversation. If the, if the Z RAC doesn't mind a little bit more of planning board business in the midst, we can, we can, I think this is a pretty straightforward one. Um, everything else.
Need me to hang around?
Um.
No, I don't.
Would you be able to leave your maps up or leave that, um?
Or you can email to them to me, Michael.
Well, I'll email a PDF to Taylor right now. How about that?
Great.
And then, uh, I'll look for feedback.
Yes, thank you. And are you standing, Michael?
I am because, uh, I'm in our house, which had a big flood last year. Is now completely renovated, but I don't have furniture yet.
Oh, I was just saying you've had a four day drive and I've been standing for two hours.
I know, I know. Well.
Better, better than sitting, right?
Yeah, well.
So, uh, can you, can people hear me? Uh?
Who's speaking, please?
It's Ellen.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, a little unclear each thing what you were proposing after this.
Well, we were, so the planning board was going to have, start talking about three A and, um, North Maine at nine fifteen, but I moved that we just move it up. Um, to, to the next agenda item, but, um, so that people who have been talking about it and, and it's fresh on our mind, we can just continue the conversation.
Is, yeah, isn't that all?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah. What, at what time, at what time would you resume the North Main Street discussion?
I think if we, uh, I think we have about, I think we can do the Z B A permit, the petition in about maybe five to 10 minutes. So why don't we say that we would resume North Main Street at eight fifty?
Right. I think, uh, you can get the ledges in too, probably.
The ledges, I think is that's, they need to do more work. So it's nothing really, we don't have to make a real decision on that one. So, um, a- as well as the A N R. Okay. So, um, why don't we, um, take a brief break from the Z RAC meeting and we'll jump into, um, the Z B A petition number four thousand six on twenty-seven Florence Street. And Taylor, do you want to set it up for us, please? And, and there's someone with their hand raised. Rich Bartel.
Sorry, that was me. Oh, maybe it was me. I don't know if I pulled my hand down. Um.
No, Rich has got his hand raised.
Rich, I'm going to unmute you.
I, I am muted. Um, I'm here. I, I was, uh, just listening in to what was to be needed by, uh, me to prepare for the ledges application to separate a lot, um, from our property. And if there's more work to be done, please let me know.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we do, um, twenty-seven Florence Street and then, um, we'll, we'll get to the ledges quick, very quickly, I believe. Um, okay, Taylor, please.
Can everyone see, see, see my screen?
Yep.
So we have a Z B A petition four zero zero six for twenty-seven Florence Street. Uh, the petitioner twenty-seven Florence, we're seeking a special permit under three five five uh, to construct an addition that we located closer to the front property, uh, than permitted as of right. Uh, the property is in, uh, uh, R G and it's nine thousand one hundred and forty-four square feet. Proposed front, uh, the proposed addition of front porch and rear second story to a section of the home that currently compromises only as, uh, comprises only of a single story. Addition will strictly adhere to the existing footprint of the home and will not encroach any closer to the property lines and currently uh, than the current footprint already does. Architecturally, the proposed addition remains consistent with the current building. As proposed, site traffic and drainage do not need to be considered. If you can see in our graph, the existing front setback is nine point nine feet. The proposed is actually a little less at ten point one because that's the change of a stair, but it is still within the twenty foot required setback.
Okay. Um, are there any comments from the board? Oh, I'm, do we have something is engineering with us this evening? I did not notice if we have someone from engineering.
Matt is here. So I'm here.
Oh, hi, Matt.
Hi, yes.
Town engineer, Matt Schen.
Yes, so, uh, the net increase in per area is under five hundred square feet. So it doesn't meet any of the thresholds for a stormwater review.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, now to the board, any comments, concerns, motions?
Um, so it seems like they are yeah, they're increasing the front to two stories instead of one, correct? And adding a porch and then reducing the setback by less than a foot. Um, but still within the, within the setback. I mean, to me, it's, it seems like a very innocuous, um, thing, and I wish them the best. And I would, I would make a motion to, um, make favorable action towards it.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, any discussion?
My only comment is that I think that it's very clear from section three five five that, um, the designs that they have come forward with do not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. They stick within the lines and, um, conform to the rules.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
I think we are. Uh, so, um, the motion is to recommend favorable action on the Z B A petition number four zero zero six, twenty-seven Florence Street. Um, Yicheng.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I say I as well. Um, thank you very much. Um.
But thank you guys.
And, uh, good luck, uh, at the Z B A.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Hope you guys have a great night.
You too. Thanks. Um, so why don't we, um, jump right into the ledges and, uh, Rich Bartels, um, could you, um, tell us, let us know who you are?
Sure, happy to. Um, I'm a, um, about an eight year resident up here at the ledges, uh, moved here from a different place, Wyman School, where I was in two different, uh, apartments for a few years and, uh, now up here on the ledges uh, in, uh, unit number ninety-nine, which is the top of the hill. Uh, just, um, and before you exit out onto Aristotle Street. Uh, I've been a member briefly of the ledges board to, uh, fulfill the, uh, term of one, uh, member who had retired. And, uh, now I'm no longer on the board, but, uh, had proposed while I was there uh, to see if we could find a way to, uh, separate a lot to, uh, help with the, uh, cost of the repairs that have come in to, uh, bear in the common areas. And uh, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a, a designer. I'm not a architect in any shape or form. I'm just an interested citizen and member of the ledges community. We'd like to be able to try to to, uh, get some increased, uh, value into our reserve fund without, uh, having to lever, uh, large, um, assessments, uh, to all the residents that are up here.
Okay. Do you, do you represent the ledges in an official capacity or you're just here as a resident?
I, I, I'm, uh, an official representative of the board of the ledges.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Um, Taylor, do you want to, um, go into this, please?
Uh, yes. So what we're looking at is essentially the subdivision of a planned residential area, which has not happened before. So there's no, um, there's no language in our zoning bylaws that, uh, explain what would happen for the subdivision of a planned residential area. Um, this is eight point six, by the way, in the, in the zoning bylaw. Um, for, uh, for PRDs, the planning board is responsible for the review of all PRD submissions and you, and it reports its recommendation of approval or disapproval to the Board of Appeals. And any rezoning of a PRD has to be confirmed at town meeting. So what we're looking at here is, does this subdivision count as the, does subdividing this lot into a single buildable lot, does this create a, um, a new lot that's in the same zone? And if you were to build on that lot, you would have to change zones. That would have to go to town meeting. Or does changing, does subdividing, can you change the use of that lot through special permit? So that's what we, uh, that's what we need to find out. Uh, working between, uh, myself and council, since we do not have the language that is necessary to come up with an answer tonight, um, no. Come up with an answer tonight, um, the last paragraph is. Is uh, mine and council's recommendation. That if the ledges wants to per- pursue this, we're more than happy to work with them to, to, to pursue it. But they, uh, we would like to ask them um, to hire a land use lawyer in order to uh. Coordinate that with our lawyer instead of the planning board.
We are happy to uh, hire a lawyer and uh, the uh, budget has been uh, authorized uh, starting uh, January first. So I'll proceed with, with engaging the lawyer and uh, having them contact uh. With you, Taylor, is that the best way to go?
That's the best way to go.
All right, and uh, in the meantime, should I also be uh, thinking that we should have a um. Survey of the proposed lot uh, taking place, uh, or is that too soon to do that?
I would, I would save yourself on that. I think that you can, there's no, there's no harm. But let's figure out some of the legal stuff first and then, and and then we'll, and then we'll move forward with, with that. So it sound okay?
Very good, I will have you do, happy to do that.
Okay.
I will, thank you very much. Thanks for accelerating the meeting.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
I, I do have to, I, I, I do have to ask if we're already here, can we just do the A N R?
Yeah.
Okay, this one's quick too, right?
Yep. So, the reason why um, this A N R is quick is because the submission was actually um. Uh, pulled out today, the, 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 the submitters pulled their, their submission for, for an A N R. So we are not voting tonight. I do wanna let you know what, what happened. So when um, when an A and out, when an A N R comes in, there's a two-step process. The first is we have to approve the submission, so there is an approval of, of the submission and that approval is based off of. If the lot is, is buildable. Now, there are three things that are really important to, to, to understand. If the lot is on a certified street in the town of Winchester. If it meets the minimum width requirement to become a certified street in the future. Or if it meets the minimum requirements to be considered of an, an efficient fire lane. Brookside Place does not meet any of these three. So between the work of myself, the engineering department and the fire department. We put out three memos, you can see them at the last three pages, there, here, the my memo, Matt's memo and Steve's memo. Um, all requesting denial of this, of this A N R because it does not. Um, meet the minimum requirements needed for the width of a, of a um. Of a fire lane in, in the case of emergency. Matt, I know that you've been sticking around, thank you very much. Uh, can you uh, given uh, your, your, your perspective on this?
Yeah, so just reviewing the subdivision regulations and the information provided by the fire department, uh, fire lane is concerned. Uh, twenty feet wide, um, so my understanding is the fire department is looking for a twenty-foot width on, on. Uh, any, any way that's serving for fire access, which this would, it, it, uh, Brookside Place does have a house. An existing house located at the end of it, it has two houses that. Uh, a but Brookside Ave that have uh, driveways and garage access off of Brookside Place and then additional lot. So their request was that it be treated, you know, at a minimum as a fire lane, which would require twenty foot width, um, just. Just for your information, the, the road right now is, or the ways thirteen feet wide, so it's, it's pretty substantially substandard.
And the, the people who submitted after a conversation um, with all the staff members at town, the uh. Yeah, I don't know if these, so the petitioner, submitter, I, the, the. They um, they withdrew their, their, their submittal and they will be submitting again with a proposal of a widened road. So what, so it is important for you all to know what the status is of the, of the project today. Um, why it has been withdrawn, why, why we would have recommended it's denial. And its upcoming resubmission with a widened road in the next month. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Um, and now we return. To um, our discussion, I think we're gonna put off our approval of minutes. And we're gonna return to our discussion of North Main Street and three A, so um. Since we're gonna continue this with the Z Rack, which I think is a different conversation than we would have if it were just the planning board. Um. What, how do we wanna run this? I guess if the Z Rack members have more they wanted to say to us, please do so.
Because I don't have anything more substantive to add, I think the uh, map that Michael showed. With the callouts with the basic descriptions of what people envisioned each zone to become. Is critical, that is, for better or for worse, that's about the level of information that I think most residents and town meeting members will look at. That is Michael's pictures, uh, so I think capturing in, you know, the six, eight, ten words. What we envisioned for each of those areas would be the critical path thing to do, but I don't, at this moment, I haven't been working closely enough with those areas. In recent years, except to drive through them to, to think I have anything intelligent to say at the moment on the issue, so. I'd throw it back to you guys, I mean, if you, if you and Michael and others have fairly strong visions of what ought to happen in each of those zones, I think be a good time to. Jot it down and send it back and we can chew on it at the next Z Rack meeting.
Now, I'd have to say what, what, what I'm most. What, what, what I'm chewing on in my brain is what the mix of uses should be in terms of what, what kind of. Commercial uses do we want? I mean, there's the scale of the buildings and to be honest, I think um. I think it, the, the, you know, upward, I'm, you know, the northern section has a pretty small scale of buildings until you get to that big lot. So I don't know the neighborhood would be ups, have problems with that, but I think. Understanding what sort of mix of residential and commercial and what types of commercial use. I think that's, that's a key question, just looking at our current use table, it's very restrictive. And so trying to understand how we can open it up. And allow some of the uses that um, you know. Neighborhood oriented uses, um, I know that office space is probably not the best use of it. I know there's a ton of empty office space around everywhere. Um, but I don't, you know, I don't know what it'll be like in twenty years, maybe we're gonna have all of these sort of um. Workspaces where people can, you know, if they're not at work, they can go and, you know, grab an office somewhere. I mean, that was the, the thing five years ago, maybe it'll come back. So that's, that's where I'm at, just confused.
I'm a little bit curious about the uses too because um. You, you said Lance, that that office building doesn't give us very much money, but is there, is there a higher um. Tax rate for say, small, you know, user retail spots like. Um, restaurants and cafes and then office uses? But I'm, that, that's one thought, but also the other is just, you know, looking at the master plan and looking at all the amount of money that um. The town loses for um, uh. You know, people who, who reside here and go out elsewhere to get stuff, including everything except for lawn services, I suppose. Um, you, just getting, getting, seeing all the incredible innovative um. Retail spots that are happening in Arlington, say, or even Woburn, right, um. That's where I get all my bakery goods and breads and, and every, every week seems to be a new, new exciting thing, a restaurant to try in those areas. Um, but it's sorely lacking in ours and there's so much money to be spent from our residents in those areas. Um, I just, um, don't know how to encourage that more and just the loss of multiple cafes in downtown. Um, seems to be a trend too, um, so. It not, I'm not focusing just on that, but I'm just wondering some sort of. There, there's such a need for that stuff, but so, so little supply here and not, no sort of um. Way to sustain them in, in our town and I'm, I'm just really. Wondering how to do that and it seems like Main Street especially would be huge. And I know some of you, I, I don't care, especially, um, you, you probably go to the um, Cross Street. Um, arena, the soccer, the soc- soccer stadium, so like, every single. Day on a weekend, there's at least a hundred families coming from Charlestown, Watertown, everywhere to come to that. Particular indoor stadium and that, that amount of. Traffic just disperses immediately, there's no capturing of that, that amount of people coming into our town for those specific things. And um, including the Winchester School of Music and, and Wright Lock and those sorts of things, like there's just, there's not enough business. Um, in our town to capture all of that, all, all of that, and so. Curious how to really develop that so that it becomes a thriving avenue where people not just come to the, to the um, house, but they. They stay and have dinner here and, and you know. Walk down the streets and buy stuff.
Yeah, you can, where do you, where do you get your bread?
Oh my god, well, Mama Do's, I definitely do, but. Oh, definitely Arlington.
Okay, because I, I, because I feel like we're starved, I mean, the.
Mama Do's is awesome, but, yeah.
But Mama Do's just, Mama Do's just closed their location in Arlington Center. And um, I think our, you know, I, I hear you, Yicheng, but I was just walking that near Kickstand. In Arlington Center and there's like a long stretch of empty storefronts there as well, so. Um, I don't know. Taylor, this might be the place where we start talking about our economic development consultants that the town has got a grant for.
But I, can I just say?
When you're done.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Ellen.
Uh, no, I just, I mean. I, I, if we. I, I, I do agree with a lot of what Yicheng said, but I'm also just thinking, you know, we're. We're trying to develop this whole thing. Um, with obviously increased density and make it, you know, more neighborhood-y, I mean, I, I. I think to, I think to do that, you need to have certain small businesses, encourage certain small businesses and infrastructure. For the future. You know, yes, cafes, that's fan- fantastic, but also, you know. Uh, I mean, ma- ma- maybe this is, I'm just thinking about things that people would, would have, like. Or used to have, say, where, um, you know, on the main. Uh, you know, where the C V S was gonna go in, you know, when, you know how there was like, oh, for years, there were little businesses there, there was a. Little grocery, a Photoshop, which is obsolete now, or. Dry cleaners or whatever, I mean, I think if we're gonna put a lot of, I mean, density up there, we need to kind of. Think about some of the things that people kind of need, would wanna use on a daily, weekly basis. Also, not just, uh, you know, there could be nice little shops there too, to attract passersby, but. I think we really need to make those, all this new housing up there be, you know, be even more attractive by.
I agree with that, I think the business drive should be to serve the really local neighborhood, I mean, I'm thinking about all the travel soccer we go to. If it's not easy to park and it's not food that the kids know, we're not gonna stop for it, you know, it's sort of like. It's just like, we love little town, we go to little places all the time, my kids will eat basically anything, I have the easiest kids in the world, but. Like going to and, going to a town for something that's. You know, I mean, maybe a coffee shop for the moms that are beached there for practice, but. We're not, we don't have the square footage to make it easy to, for the team to go to dinner in town, like that's, you know. Parking twelve cars and trying to capture that traffic is not practical in Winchester, but making, I always worry. That we're trying to put housing in that's gonna be low quality because they're not gonna have a place to park and they're gonna be trying to get to stop and, you know, like if we can make. Pockets of business that serve the people in that neighborhood, you know, where they can walk and get whatever, you know. You know, get your nails done also on North Main, you know, I mean, I'm being funny, but, but.
I would suggest that somebody from the planning board go talk at length with, uh, over coffee with Tom Howley. Who was on the board at the time, they put the village overlay centers in, because the drive at that point was to do exactly what. Uh, Carrie and Ellen are talking about is that, how do you consolidate and provide local community services? And uh, Tom's, Tom ended up many years later, it was, that was a bust. Never went anywhere, whatever the economics of it or the land ownership or the rentals, whatever, it just never happened and.
But I, I think that opened up.
Going back and going back and doing econo- getting some economic advice is to, what constitutes a viable. Cafe business in an area like that is gonna be critical before you go and.
But even if it's service, the therapist that can serve the neighborhood, you know, I think office space in general is in flux. Because you're not, I just don't, I think everywhere you go, you're looking at empty storefronts and I think it's a problem a lot of businesses have, but I, I think as far as sort of. Who to ask, who, you know, who to, who to ask to guide the interest level, I think the neighborhood is the place to start, not the visitors.
Well, everybody will, everybody told us they wanted neighborhood services, but when it came. Pushed to shove, nobody wanted it in their backyard and nobody patronized them.
Yeah, but at this.
It's a nasty, nasty problem, but uh.
With this M V T three A, you know, down the road, I mean, there, you have the potential for a, a really different scenario out there than you've had before.
And I think, I always think about the shoe store in downtown, which could not have been better loved and just was underutilized, like, and I don't know. Yeah. Wasn't, I don't know, who with kids my age don't, doesn't miss the shoe store, but the, it just wasn't enough to sustain a retail expense in this town.
Well, I know, I know one thing which we lost um, at the uh, the X mega C V S site is the town's only laundromat. As far as I know, that was the only one in town and uh, I know. Laundromats are great places for people to gather and they have to spend forty minute, five minutes. And you know, one of my favorite places to eat in Somerville is right next to a laundromat and they got a lot of business from all the people who are uh. Waiting to put their quarters in, so um, but I don't believe we're allowed to put that currently. Along North Main Street, so I mean, I think there's a, there are.
Really?
So I think, I wonder, I wonder Lance, if some of the reason that we didn't get the development we'd hoped for. Was just because too much required, was required to go in via special permits.
Uh, perhaps, but I think the lesson we also saw in the downtown was that we have a really balkanized. Uh, land use pattern down, or ownership pattern. At one point, we thought, well, it's owned by a couple, three or four big landlords in the downtown, we can easily get them to sort of reinvest. And at some point, we did a, did two studies, one and just documenting who owned what properties and. Who managed the stores on them and it was a lot more diverse than we thought. And when talking to real estate developers generally, they said, well, you know, it's such a pain in the ass to assemble parcels. You know, nobody wants to sell them, they think they're gold mines, da, 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 so they're gonna wait another five years. It was just impossible to assemble stuff that was large enough to attract new investment. And the new businesses, uh, and then we also. Got a state-funded study, um, woman Peg Behringer, who was a retail economist, did a very nice study for us. A bunch of years ago, looking at uh, what Ellen and I think Carrie were talking about was. Uh, how much purchasing power is there in Winchester and how much of it is captured by businesses in Winchester and the answer was very little. Or not, not little, but not much, uh, and she said at the time that we're simply not providing what she called. Uh, clusters of compatible services. Uh, and when we were working on the C B D, we tried to get the downtown merchants to think about, you know, what are the com- com- complimentary. Uh, businesses that you need to have in a close area to attract people as a destination, them come and shop. And you know, the business property owner said, we're not gonna bother, we don't wanna spend a dollar doing that. So the, there was no other mechanism, the chamber didn't wanna get into it, uh. So there were two problems, one was a land assembly for building and restructuring the area and the other for, you know, figuring out what kind of. Liable combination of services you needed and without that information, you know, it was really hard to say what the zoning and uses should be. Although I, I think you're right, Diab, that the zoning use restrictions of North Main are pretty out of date, they're nineteen thirties stuff.
Also, you know, it's, it, it, a lot has changed in the last ten, fifteen years, you know, with, with the trends away from, away from malls and. Um, you know, post COVID, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, 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 just because it didn't work one time, doesn't mean it wouldn't be worth at least looking into. Um, because again, I, I. I, I, I don't think people who, we got, I get high density up, up North Main Street. You really want everybody driving downtown to, you know, to, you know, to do. Their business, I mean, wouldn't you rather, I mean, so much nicer if they could, they had some things that were useful to them where they could walk.
Well, and I wanna revisit Wenji's.
Can we, I I'm sorry, Wenji's had her hand up for a long time.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll put mine down.
Yeah, I also wonder after the Winchester commuter rail station got finished. I would imagine there are more commuters that stop. And they will pass those commercials and in May. And also the new residential development um will also probably encourage more commuters. And they will like pass across between the North Main and the town center, it may add more um. Business opportunities. Um, I also, I'm also curious why. Restaurants in Winchester are expensive and not taste good. Because the tax is much higher here for the. The restaurant owners or I don't know, like, I just feel when I want to eat out with people. Uh, neighbors who are also Winchester residents, we would always go to Ubben, Burlington. Somerville elsewhere, not here.
Lexington, which is a little more comparable to us than than those towns, has 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 more restaurant choices, that's for sure.
Right.
Much bigger population.
When we did the commuter rail station study. Most of them said there was nothing open when they were walking downtown to get the train. And the merchant said, and when they come home in the evening, they all just go home, they don't shop.
I I wanna bring back up what Wenji said though, that we should keep in mind, you know, this like. The zoning for educational or maker spaces or those kinds of things, cuz we are like, I do think it's, I think. That might be under leveraged here cuz we are a kid focused town and I think things that that are um, you know, where we're taking our kids all over the place for. Coding classes and for uh you know, youth activities and all of that stuff, I think that market is. That's a very different space to think about than a small cafe, but it's something that we should keep on our radar. I thought that was a good idea.
There was also, there used to be a big market for um small businesses, one, two people. Uh, a lot of them were spinouts of people at Harvard, MIT, BU, doing lab work or development. They would rent space in the laundry building downtown. Except they found that space to be pretty awful. Uh, cuz it was industrial quality heating and cooling, um, but they would, after a few years, they would wanna hire three or four people. And then they couldn't find any other space in Winchester, so they'd move somewhere else to Cambridge. Or Somerville, Drew Batero looked into that and said there was a, tried to push around Bolton Street to. You know, where could you, where could you get an office for five people?
Yeah, I I think there's, there's, there's room for that when we go back to looking at the light industrial area and trying to make more efficient use of that space. Um, there's some bizarre parking to square footage ratios, which don't make any sense. Um, so we can, and the the lot sizes are rather large, so I think that might be a real viable place. Carrie, I think, I think that's a, the the key to something like that along North Main Street is to. Recognize that I think the land value along that part of up on North Main Street is probably lower. So it might be easier to get something which is a little lower um. Revenue, I don't know how much revenue you get for something like that. But I think when we look at the zoning, I think the key is to. Not make it so restrictive that we can't do something like that. You know, and and that's the one thing that I see that our zoning now and it's just like, you know, you can only do these few things and that's it. And it really has, so when we look at the zoning, let's just try to. Make it flexible enough so that, you know, you know, moderate sized things can happen. Um, but you know, there, I think we can all agree there were probably some things that we don't want to happen. But um trying to make things flexible. I'm I'm still going.
You're talking about what can be in the buildings, what what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that I think it makes a lot of sense.
Suggestion earlier that we all take a really close look at the table of uses and identify the ones that are obviously absurd restrictions. But I also would recommend that whoever has time to look at the table of uses for comparable corridors. In towns nearby um in terms of what's permitted and not permitted. And the comment was made that that um we should provide to people. Something that they know they wanna just walk out and have access to and then walk back home again. And that whole concept is got a title, the fifteen minute neighborhood. And I haven't done a lot of research about what those words as a title actually refer to. But the concept of it is very appealing to me and I know we have an economic development consultant, R F P process underway. Um, and certainly they and the residents, and this is something that Ellen said earlier, to include input from the residents. To do some table of uses workshops or whatever, Taylor, I would defer to your expertise. With community engagement, but the table of uses is an excellent platform to capture. Um, identified silly things, add things that would be cool um and take out things we don't want. And that's the platform for doing it and I'd love it if we could move that forward.
I wonder if we could start with.
Table to the Z RAC meeting. That would keep us from waving our hands and being specific.
I can bring a copy, yep.
Yeah, I I think one of the one exercise would be something to look at the table of uses for the CBD. And ask what what those uses, why, which one of those are appropriate for the North Main Street corridor? And 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 trying to understand.
I mind um maybe down the road would be another. Um, you know, not another, but a a a a. An alternative to something like Dagostino's, where you've got a grocery. You know, kind of a specialty grocery where you can also get some beer and wine, you can get some other things. Doesn't have to be, you know, specifically another a deli, but you know, that kind of thing. Would poten- would could could potentially um, you know. A like a corner store, if you know what I mean, maybe.
We we tried a, we tried a liquor store on the corner of Clark and Main and nearly got roasted for the effort.
You tried one on on Canal in Maine too, so.
I said beer and wine, Lance.
I I the only, the only. Yeah, I, the only thing I can, I can think of.
Groceries. Stop and shop is horrible.
We we would have to see whether or not, how many extra beer and wine licenses the town has, cuz uh that 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 was an issue in the past. Yeah, although I would, yeah.
Basic and some specialty groceries.
Each thing, I'm sorry. Sorry, before I run out of time, I just wanna sort of um talk about the two big, I feel like, well, revelations of the Z RAC meeting. And three A and um Main Street, which was the dispersion of the of the districts was what was one. And I I would like to have some time just with the planning board too, to to figure out what's going on. I don't know how many of you guys have been going to the Z RAC and if we're welcome there. But um it it would be nice, I think I'm I'm thinking about going there just to listen to in on things. But the other one on Main Street, you know, the the various districts, um, the seven districts and. Um, the the various density and the height and the the collection of. Um, nuances along those things. I just would like to focus on that with the planning board, if that's possible, Diab.
Yeah, I would as well. I've been to, I've been to all the Z RACs, they've been really great, um, very in depth. I think that um. I really encourage everyone to go to them.
I think fitting in on them is really useful and I think it's.
Yeah.
There are, there are definitely a variety of opinions around the table. And I think that's really useful to hear everyone coming at it from a very, it's a different perspective. Um, the dispersion of, you know, I I think there, you know, in terms of the location of the M B T A districts. Um, I think there are, you know, that is. It's, I think it's all over the place at the moment in terms of what's possible, what people have asked. I know that. Um, I've asked Emily to look at a minimal build out in the town center. To see what that, where we would, where we would end up having to put the density. Um, and then, you know, there are the um, you know, so that's, that came out of one of the Z RAC meetings was was to look at. And so um. I don't, the Z RAC is also, I think one of the things that we have to provide is an idea for what the Z RAC's deliverables are. And I think Steve asked that a couple of weeks back, what are our deliverables? And I think other than everyone sitting there and absorbing everyone's comments. We need to think about what we're going to ask them, if it's simply a memo, just or just, you know. Having us sit down and have them tell us what their what their experience has been in terms of what they thought about, that might be one way of doing it. I don't wanna. You know, I don't think it, something too onerous, I think is 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 not a good idea.
One thing I would like to know, as you said, there there are some voices that are louder than others, but I would like to see what the breakout of it is. So in terms of a vote, say, of like where where people are at, um, that would be helpful. To just see the percentage of people who are who are leaning this way or that, um. And I think seeing seeing exact numbers helps, um. As well as the quality of the content um of of the comments, right?
So I think that following up on that, we would need to give them some topics to express opinions on. Um, and say, these are the parts that we need more input on, or these are the things that we think are most um. Problematic, whatever. So coming up with a list of of questions that we could pose, get their answer on. I think that would be really useful.
Hmm.
Um, I think that.
They they basically started on that path in the last Z RAC meeting because they were looking at that notion of. These are the factors that that contribute to the look and feel and experience of each one of those. Seven districts, for instance, and there was a specific list of factors that that um. Steve was making a grid to capture everybody's inputs. On on, you know, say height and then one through seven districts or whatever, um setback density, whatever, so. That was something that's already underway, um, and it's great to get the Z RAC's input on that. As far as deliverables, I think you can back it out of um the timeline to town meeting. And say, what do we need to bring to town meeting and what can the Z RAC do to help us meet our deliverables? So let's have that conversation and figure it out, like the work plan. And Emily um is going to, I understand, Taylor. Work on a timeline for the availability of various communications tools. Based on different platforms, and so that communications timeline together with um the. The what we need to bring to town meeting and how long does it take us to create that? Um, and what are the process steps in it? So for instance, all the boards that we need to meet with individually, all the communities and precincts. Community, um, excuse me, uh, uh, boards and commissions and precincts that we need to meet with. Um, tho- those are the things that are the deliverables of the Z RAC in addition to um hearing your. Recommendation and maybe it ends up being two recommendations. Um, half the Z RAC feels it would be better if we did this in this location. And half feels that, I mean, that's kind of what happened with the Waterfield Lot Task Force, um, which is what happens. Um, but we definitely need support cuz there's so much work to do. Um, like researching uses in other towns and coming up with ideas for tables of uses, that's like an example.
Yeah, so one big art, one big point that I was hearing from the Z RAC meeting was that some were wanting to. Divert as much housing away from um the center as possible, some were in favor of being in there, so. Is I, if there are two camps like that, I would love to hear the the various, um, you know, written down and recommendations. For those things, cuz it that, you know, the voice, the voice, um. Support was very, I I mean, I think it's some of bias because we we had only a a fraction of the group here. So that kind of a detailed understanding of that, cuz that I can see that being a very contentious thing.
Well, and the the to that, to that end, um, you know, the the maps that Emily, the the new um. The I'm I'm, what should we call it, maps overlay. Models that she's going to. Be, they're apparently going to be available for the meeting on the twentieth, uh, um, you know, are, we need to see those. Um, because I think there's still a lot of things that have been put out there that 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 need that um. There's not not enough information quite yet, you know. So, and we, I know we don't have a lot of time, so we need to get there, but.
Ellen's, Ellen's quite correct, I think. I guess be careful what you ask for. Uh, I think using, as it's set up right now, using the Z RAC as a board to hear discussions and hear opinions and stuff like that. I'd think twice before you ask them for written recommendations or votes or something like that. Uh, because that can be used against you later too, because somebody in town meeting will say. Well, it was a five to four vote on this or such like that, and then you're gonna get a lot of, you get a lot of pain. For doing that, I think, uh, what Ellen said, a lot of our discussions have been, well, what? Is you had the discussion earlier this morning, if we move X acreage out of the CBD half mile zone. Do we still meet the requirements? And until we get some of those answers, uh, I don't think the the Z RAC knows what it's doing with them either.
Right.
We will be closer, we will get those answers hopefully on the twentieth, but.
And then, yeah, in the, in the end, the advisory committee is advisory and the political decisions, policy decision, that can be made by the board. And you don't necessarily wanna set it up, I've seen it happen, set it up so the advisory committee recommendations become policy recommendations that you then have to. Deal with or return.
I agree, I I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it being asked to to vote. We're, we're an advisory group.
But we have plenty of opinions.
Well, I think then we should certainly ask opinions in strategic areas, how's that? So I I have to admit that.
This on the direction you.
A consensus, yeah. Well, I've I've been a little frustrated that um. We've been spending a lot of time on the overlay districts and exactly where they might be and all that, and we haven't moved on to what I think is. You know, design considerations, how do we, how do we handle design and keep things together? Um, what do we do about historic preservation? I don't know what the answers to that are, and I know that we're still looking for them. But it seems like the Z RAC has spent a lot of time talking about overlay districts and and trying to move things around. And um maybe it's simply because it's hard to. You know, it's, it's easy to ask the questions, what would happen if we moved it here? And it's harder to get those answers, there's a lot, there's a delay. But I really, um, I think we do have a. Difficult questions about how we achieve design guidelines which are which are compliant. And so I was hoping that, I'm hoping that we can start talking with Michael and Emily about. Um, what are the elements of compliance which would allow us to pro- to do some protection for what we want? And you know, we don't run afoul of of being noncompliant, so. Those are really difficult questions that I I want the Z RAC to chime in on.
But the uh things that's problematic about that is that we need the consultants. At our meeting to to make any progress with that, because they need to guide that. They need, and and that's just not the way it's been set up and it's not right or wrong, it's just, we 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 can only, I mean. Consultants are the ones who who need to uh be kind of driving that bus.
Yeah, I think that as as we get, I mean, what we've been talking about is how you sh- shape shift. The portion of the three A overlay that's in the downtown. And if you can shift that so that you exclude more of the historical buildings, that issue is gonna go away, or maybe not. Likewise, I think when you get some vision of what's gonna go up on North Main Street. Uh, you know, as Michael was getting to today, then it becomes easier to say, well, if we're gonna be putting. You know, townhouses here and higher buildings here, then you got a a framework to say what I wanna do with design. Guidelines and begin to put those in place, so I I think we're just.
And I think it's.
Step or step or two away, Diab, from getting at that issue.
And I think in the in the downtown overlay, it's very unclear.
Yeah.
I I think we also have some good examples in towns that have already passed theirs, uh, and I know that I think Brookline has had a lot of. I mean, they have substantially more resources than we have and they probably have a rich. Uh, design um guidelines that we can draw on, i- 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 or at least to to know whether. Um, such such guidelines would be acceptable. I think that, I think that'd be a big help for us.
Yeah, recycling is good.
Yeah, I I want one, one caveat on that. Is that I, we, one of, we, we don't know whether Burke Lines has been approved by the state. And so.
It doesn't, that's true, um, but. It doesn't, that's true. Um, but
I agree with you completely. That's the only thing is that we, you know, how how the state reacts to those guidelines might give us um a little further information on where we can go.
Right, if we get, yeah, that'd be nice to have that.
We'll evaluate those guidelines.
I'm sorry, Sally.
Do we know when the state, because it's been submitted, right? Brookline?
I don't know anything about that. Uh, maybe we can, we can reach out to Brookline.
I I know. So the, so they, the the town, the town voted, they have to submit before December thirty first. I'm sure there is some extra language that goes into it that they that is that they're gonna submit. The state then does not have a timeframe for for their for their approval. The state also has not said what happens if if they, if they're, if they don't approve. So they haven't said, really, there's no clarity if you say, if the state says, can they say absolutely no? Well, can Brookline then go back? Can Winchester then go back and say, okay, well, then we actually want to tailor these things because we want to comply.
They would give you, I I would think that they would give you a uh, a letter and then you would respond to it one way or the other. Um, or you you would you would respond to the 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 points that they would make and you have to go line by line and probably, you know, make changes. But I I think that uh, I don't think we should be too afraid of of being aggressive on the design guidelines. Uh, I mean, I suppose as Lance said, if we, if we're able to exclude some of the the historic areas, it'll go away as a problem. But I I still think it's, I still think that we want to be able to have an idea what the town is gonna look like.
I think from a process point of view, D M, I would suggest that I would ask either the board, either the volunteer Tyler or your consultants to cobble together some design guidelines, mockups that they think would fit the various North Main Street districts and the overlay part of the CBD. Having us wander, having us wander around and try to assemble them as a group, you know, for an hour or two an evening is
Yeah.
Much easier to have something. Give us a, give us a, a strong man to react to. People can say yes or no and and fit on the things like that, but I don't think ten o'clock at night is the wrong way to put design guidelines. I would second next idea of plagiarizing what you can from any other town around, putting it together and then see if it works. And we got a lot, we have to sub- submit ours. State is gonna be looking at the whole Brookline package, not just design guidelines. So you don't want to wait around for them. No, so Michael has already put together design guidelines on one of his slides, the really densely worded slide. He's got the design guidelines.
Is that just a kind of a template?
Template. I mean, those aren't, those aren't what we need for the three A, that's kind of a summary.
Well, those would be the design guidelines for, say, North Main Street. And what they do is they give you, um, it's more than a template. It's really the guidepost of where you take them. I think they're actually almost taken directly out of the work they did for Newton. So I think it's at a level of specificity.
Yeah, were you talking about the three columns that said like corridor, street and
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Considerations that one must think about when we're.
Those are concerned, those are considerations. Yeah, they 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 don't strike you.
Consider the zoning when we, when we consider the the entire, you know, zoning.
Like to see is for each of those districts, we've got a vision, you know, this is gonna be mostly residential, three story, whatever. Package me up four or five, you know, blurbs on guidelines, you know, it's a short list. For that district, what are the design guidelines, given you want to do residential? For the west or the east one down where the Burger King is, that's gonna be densely commercial. What are the guidelines there? Give, give me something specific, the general. Uh, when I look at that one board, I think all of those are excellent, but I just go glaze over. I can't deal with it. I'm getting simple in my old age. So um, so that's an ask then is for Michael and Emily to come up with some um, some more detailed guidelines. Or or at least take.
Well, I think they're gonna do that as part of the process. I think they need to put, of course.
But but given that that there are some time constraints, maybe they they could start that and get something to us sooner rather than later.
So let's, um, so why don't we, I don't know, so we're gonna get something from Emily in two weeks for the Z-Rac for for the overlay districts. I don't know what the timeframe might be.
Over a week.
Or I'm sorry, next week, whatever next week is. Um, so let's, let's, um, Taylor, we can reach out to Michael and John and find out what their timeframe might be to put together some design guidelines. Um, I think, I think one of the other things, I think the board would like to have guidelines which are which extend along the corridor into the CBD so that we don't have an abrupt change in things. But let's, um, that's essential. That's what I think is what we're looking for. So why don't we figure out what the timeframe is on that and get back to you with the timeframe. Hopefully we'll know that by next Wednesday, but I don't know what Michael's schedule is like now that he's out in Montana. I would put together a set of quick and dirty design guidelines at this point. Again, our committee is not gonna have the time or the expertise to put down a very great detail on it, but getting a basic set that the people feel is appropriate for this district versus that district. Let us read through them and people will be able to say, yeah, it sounds about right, or it doesn't cover this.
I I I'm expecting, that's what I'm expecting from them at the first pass, and it will have considerable opportunity to make, uh, you know, input.
So one one question that I think they might ask is how much are we are we ready at a policy level to tell them exactly what it is that we want there so that they could actually start working on these guidelines?
I don't think so. I think it needs to be quick and dirty at this point.
The discussion on the twentieth, um, which Michael will be bringing more visualizations and also by then we will have um, map, um, we'll have information on how reconfiguring the overlay districts meets or doesn't meet compliance. Um, so those are sort of what things we're waiting for right now. But
Right.
So the twentieth is 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 a is a kickoff for talking about the design.
Yeah, I'd be reluctant to give him too much guidance, given the fact that the whole board is not able to come to a consensus. And I don't think that we can at this point. I think they should put something together based on some of their other work and try to, try to, uh, you know, I guess protect the historic look and feel of the city as much as possible. But I guess that's, you know.
How the language works in other towns is really helpful.
I I'm, 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 you know, as a consultant, if someone said, I I just think that they might want a little more direction. I think that maybe we can look at the the.
Have them look at Brookline maybe.
Well, but but do we know, I mean, Brookline's a big city and there are some very urban areas and some very non-urban areas. And so the question would be, which part of Brookline are you thinking about and which part of Brookline am I thinking about when I say, let's do this sort of protection?
One thing that we do have is an underlying zoning for CBD. Uh, and and then the GBDs two and three, right? And so I don't think that all of us understand the even the dimensional requirements of each of those things. So I don't think that a lot of people understand that the CBD has point seven five parking spots per unit, whereas the GBD two has two. Um, so that that differential, and they've been playing with that. They've been, they've been sort of hinting at that, hey, are we gonna take for CBD and then bring it into the the, you know, area south of Clark and make it point seven five, so then increasing the density, that kind of thing. I think it's a policy decision that maybe this board can start to like move towards, right? And it seems like generally we're thinking south of Clark area is a higher density, it could be a continuation of the GBD. Um, and GBD already has design guidelines written in. How how much of that do we extend outward? And how much of that do we want to begin to tailor to GBD two and three? Right? Like, there there are some things that at ba- at the baseline that we can work with. Um, but I don't think that everybody on the planning board or Z-Rac know exactly what those things are. Because I don't think people understand the a- amount of as my right build out, you know, a one point five um, um, FAR gets you in in a GBD. I don't think people realize that, what what, you know, um, Michael laid out today. I don't think people, I I'm not sure. It seemed like not everyone understands that you can build up to that density already in the GBD.
I I would, I would suggest the oven Steve or Ellen can correct me that we're a little ahead of ourselves on drilling down too deeply on design guidelines. I think at the twentieth, given where we left off last meetings, discussions, I think the first, there's sort of a layer cake of questions, first layers. Do we still like those seven, you know, districts, you know? Are we comfortable with them? Do they still make sense after you look at them? Uh, Taylor's done a good map of them. They look good to me, but you know, let's chew those over and make sure they look good. The next level is, okay, we've called out in the in in Michael's uh, the diagram there, he's done the callouts and saying, here's the flavor we'd like in each of those areas, you know? This one dense, this one commercial, this one three fourths. Do those still feel good? Do those feel about right? And the next layer down is, well, okay, he's shown us some mockup visualizations. Is that what we think we're getting out of those words? And if the answer to all of those questions, and I think they're still open to changes, is yes, then I think you can go down to the question of, okay, I like the division, I like the sub-districts, I like the idea of what they, the vision of what they should be. I sort of like the visualization that gives me a concrete sense of what they're, now let's dig down into, you know, setbacks and parking and balconies and stuff like that. Until you get through those, until you get a sense that the first three questions are reasonably, we got some sort of consensus on that, getting down to design guidelines, just send you all over the place. You know, I like purple balcony, somebody likes blue balconies and and so there's a, there's a, we we left that pretty open, uh, the last discussion. People say, yeah, this is a great idea. It's ten o'clock, gotta go home, you know, so. So, um, in terms of scheduling these things then, is the I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand our schedule. So I think that if the board wanted to start talking about some of the policy decisions in a couple of weeks, um, I I would, I would recommend everyone try to get to the Z-Rac meeting next week. But then at our next meeting as a planning board, we could start talking about the North Main Street. Um, those callouts, what we see in terms of the density and the mix of residential and commercial and the scale. Um, so that's middle of December. Um, if we could.
That's not the middle of December, we're.
No, that's after Christmas.
Right.
Two weeks from now is actually, you are correct. It is already the middle of December.
Either the second or the ninth of January and I, and.
We're we're meeting on the ninth. We're not meeting on the second. So on the ninth, on the ninth, we should be ready to actually start drawing up some firm policy decisions on North Main Street so that um, we can get some design work done on that. Um, I don't know what's happening, what's going to happen with the overlay districts for three A, so I don't know how to schedule for that right now. Does that schedules, does the North Main Street schedule seem reasonable?
I think so, that we would start looking at North Main Street um, design guidelines. Um, um, starting on the ninth.
Well, we would, we would make a decision, we would make a decision on our policies which would allow them to go forward. Um, I I heard earlier in this conversation, people were looking at some quick and dirty design guidelines. This seems to be going in and not in that direction. So how do we, is is there still a desire to have some quick and dirty guidelines? There's input for the twentieth, next week's meeting. Yeah, I don't know how much work Michael will be able to do for the twentieth.
Going through the regulations governing section seven point three and extracting from those the things that are either topics that need to be addressed and or actual recommendations that can be transferred up to the corridor um, would be one thing that some of us could work on to say, what is in the CBD design guidelines right now? And then the reg- regulations governing section seven point three of our zoning law. Um, what works in there and what can we use as a springboard? I think someone mentioned that earlier. It might have been Lance.
Sorry, it doesn't have to be detailed. I think it's useful to learn just a few bullet points. Like, are, should we look at like upper middle, lower levels, um, as Michael showed, like to kind of um, get the scale and the mi- smaller than the block is really showing. Or should we do like vertical separation, like, like, is it, does it want to look more traditional or it can be more contemporary or something in between, like those bigger direction and we we go, give our our input. It doesn't have to have a solid answer, but it can be like, yeah, like facade, um, like, are are we doing more layers or um, like what's the ground floor transparency and the entrance? I think Mike already asked some of the questions and he just need to extract some bullet points and we can vote.
Well, and those are points, those are the things if if you read the CBD guidelines, those are things that are in there. So um, and I think most of the Z-Rac doesn't, is not at all familiar with those. I I am because I'm on design review committee, but um, you know, I do think Sally's right, that's a good place to at least start. So you can figure out, you can, you can see what kinds of things people are thinking about when they think design guidelines.
And so one thing that is a little confounding to me is that um, if when we're writing the overlay district design guidelines, um, they are not presented as regulations promulgated by the planning board. They are part of the actual three A compliance zoning. And so, um, because that's where it's built into, that's where they want it. They they just have rules about what you can and can't do in an overlay district. What's confusing to me is that we are also have an opportunity to do the, to redo the underlying zoning for what is currently GBD two and three. And are we talking about two sets of design guidelines, one that's written that that is integral and to the three A so overlay zoning, um, and it's been approved by the state as being sufficiently um, objective and sufficiently flexible, which I think is the op- opposite of subjective and.
This goes back to what I said at the very beginning of the meeting, which is that, um, you know, you're you're trying to put an overlay on an over, you know, on on an overlay and you know, um, it's it it's just confusing and it's kind of counterproductive. And if we can get some of that
We're not really doing an overlay over and overlay because we're doing, we're, we're, we have this opportunity to um, improve the underlying base zoning of that area of the town that is GBD two and three. So that's one exercise and we can.
Yeah, there's, there's no way we're gonna get out of putting an overlay district downtown. Um, unless you want to change the underlying zoning, but it's the easiest thing. I think that I would, I, you know, Sally, your question of are we going to have multiple design guidelines for each area is a good one. And I would hope that the whatever design guidelines that we come up, which are applicable for the MBTA areas could be used um, up North Main Street. I think there are different concerns about North Main Street than there are in the CBD. And I think that since we don't have any design guidelines essentially up North Main Street right now, that coming up with three different sets of guidelines doesn't make much sense. I would suggest that you start with the CBD guidelines for the area north of Quill Rotary up to
I would suggest that you start with the C B D guidelines for the area north of Quill Rotary up to uh. Gas, gasoline alley. I would, I'd start with those, I'd start with those and see if you could make the. Uh the, the lower part, whatever we call, whatever we're calling it, the lower, the, the skilling's to Clark section there.
I call that the, the lower part of Northern Main Street.
Or the lower part of Upper North Main Street, but I, I, I would think that the C B D guidelines, design guidelines that were set up for the area between. Quill and the Skilling's would do pretty well for Skilling's up to Clark.
Right.
And I would make those the basis.
Yeah.
Both for the Skilling's up to Clark as well as for the, for the overlay, but I don't know whether.
And the other thing.
Oh, sorry. One action item I think we can ask of our consultant, especially Emily, is her. Um her take on looking at our C B D design guidelines and what needs to change for. For, for the three A, right? Like how, how much of that design guideline needs to be scrapped or changed? In order to comply with three A within the overlay of, of three A inside the C B D. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be a really? Useful understanding of what.
Except you can't. Call the town meeting to do that.
Well, the, so the design guidelines that are not in the zoning bylaw. Are actually, do not require town meetings vote. The only design guidelines that require towns meeting vote are the ones that are. In the bylaw. So the C B D regulations can be changed by the planning board without town meeting vote.
Okay.
So, so there's always been a question of where, what goes in the regulations and what goes into this bylaw. And there's always a tension between those, and that's something this board has never really resolved. Uh we've had some major disagreements as to where they should be and what. Importance they have.
But, but for the three A community at stake. And we need a design guideline for the overlay proportions that we're gonna have within three A. Um could we ask Emily to look at that current design guideline and at, and. Say to us, since a lot of us don't know what the design guidelines could be for three A, like what, what can be kept and what needs to be changed?
Yes, I think we can definitely do that. I think that the, the state has put out. Um in their draft, they have examples zoning and guidelines that we can look at, which give us a. A flavor of what they're looking at, so. Um I, the, I don't know that we have to put all of the design guidelines in the bylaw. Um my understanding was that, but my understanding has been proved wrong in the past, was that we could, we would also have regulations. In addition, and it's just the combined package has to be compliant. But we can drill down into that and understand that better, so. I agree, I agree, Eching and Sally, this is that, starting with the existing C B D regs and seeing what, what will remain. After it become, after we take out the things that aren't compliant is a good start. Um certainly using, like Lance said, using that as, as, as the framework for what's going on in Clark Street. And let's not forget that we still want design, not, uh south of Clark. Even without the three A overlay on North Main Street, we still want good design guidelines, so. Um they have to be commensurate with each other, and that's why I'm thinking, Sally, where I was coming up with three different guidelines was. C B D overlay North Main, and I think that's one too many. I think if we could do C B D. Overlay and have overlay be sufficient for North Main. Then I think that that would be good as well.
Right. One of the confusions they have is, is, is any, is the current iteration of our um overlay district maps. Or the iterations plural, um taking, applying three A all the way up to the Wolvern line.
No, we've always left. It was only G B D two.
Which is.
The only up to Swan. We didn't need to go up.
Right, right, right. Okay, so when we talk about the shape of the. Um let's call them cores of North Main Street because we have cores of the C B D. I don't know if the word works, but those seven cores. Of North Main, um. If we're taking out the division between G B D two and G B D three, we have the opportunity to say. This is how. The design guidelines evolve over the se- seven cores. And it all happens in the language and in the tables and charts and numbers. Right? So like the C B D is seven, is five cores or whatever it is. And, and we, we compare them and contrast them and table them. So it's.
Yeah, I, I think, I, well, the design guidelines are um pretty much, they cover the entire. I mean luckily, there are different guidelines for different cores, or else that would be.
The, the, there, there's character.
Very confusing.
There's strategic objectives that are different, um and there's.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, the key is that it talks about the character, and I think that's where, if you look at each section of downtown, there is. There's no single character in the downtown. I mean, even the National Historic Thing talks about the esoteric collection of styles, so. As you, as you do stuff that's context dependent, it's pretty local. Um I mean, certainly there are, you know, over, you know. There are some common things, but each, each corner of downtown is definitely, you, no one would confuse, say, Thompson Street with Mount Vernon. I mean. You, you would, you couldn't. So I think, um but there are certain, the guidelines are, should be. Broad enough to cover those.
Clarification, I haven't read it carefully enough. When you're talking about design guidelines for the three A overlay district. Those design guidelines apply only to multifamily housing projects, right?
They are only to those taking advantage of those overlay districts.
Family, they're not, they're, they're not general design guidelines for a whole district. They're just for a specific. A specific multifamily project that you're building.
Well, the, I mean, we're talking about some pretty big districts, right? We're talking about fifty total of at least, you know, thirty seven acres, so. One would hope that that would be something that you would. But you don't want to see everywhere.
I mean, if I'm writing design guidelines just for buildings that would be developed under the three A overlay.
That's right, that's right. If you want to do a multifamily as a right.
Here's your set of design guidelines.
This is your design standards and that's written into the three A zoning bylaw. It's not a separate regulation.
So you have, if you take the C B D design guidelines. And you think of the area between, again, between Quill and Skilling's and then up to Clark, they're gonna be very similar. But those could be, you could basically move up. And do the area up to Clark with pretty much the same ones, but then the overlays applies only to. Multifamily developments that are under the three A type of thing.
You've got. That's correct.
Two layers, two layers of design. One is very narrow and the other is much broader.
But I, I.
You may want to set other design guidelines further up.
Oh, we will, we will, definitely.
I, I think we should, you know, to be honest, if we have, if we end up with multiple design guidelines, I think that's very confusing.
No, I don't think there can be multiple. It will be like we have in the C B D that if you're gonna do it here. Be considerate of this factor. So. I mean, it's all.
I, I have to say good night.
Okay, I think, I think what, what's gonna happen is we're going to see what the, what design guidelines are gonna look like. And then we'll make a decision as to whether we can use them everywhere, or we're gonna do spot, we're gonna do. More design guidelines for smaller areas. I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the amount of work that's gonna go into having to do with. New design guidelines for. The G B D two and three, as well as design guidelines for the overlay districts being separate. So those are, if we're gonna treat the, I mean, I, I just. There's a limit to the resources of our consultants, that's all I'm saying.
That's right.
And so I, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I want to use, reuse as much as possible, so. Um anyway, we should probably, everyone is leaving us, so I think we should also consider, we're, we're already over our planning board meeting time. We've now reached our four, or we're, we're at three hours, which is um a long time for us. Yeah, we should have an eating role.
Uh may I, may I make one?
Can we do an eating role for minutes?
May I make one closing observation? Uh some, but some lucky member of the planning board of the staff ought to do a back chaining schedule from your presentation. In town meeting.
Yes.
You're out, where you have to be to submit the materials to town meeting members, where you have to be for the warrant and the hearings. Everything, and from my prior experience, once you do that on a calendar, there's usually a great. You come, there's a fainting spell when you decide that you have exactly three weeks in February to do everything. And that gets to be very brutal. I, I've made that mistake before, so I would schedule it now because uh. I, I think there's a tremendous amount of work and hearings and outreach to be done.
I was concerned that, that we uh haven't scheduled any of the January X Racks, and I think it's because we've all been. Very intent on just getting to the end of the year and getting the, oh, the actual district boundaries settled. And the longer we take doing that, the less time we'll have to create language that is um understandable. And meaningful for the state and for town meeting, so.
And then you have to show it to, they have to go to the community, that's the long part of it. Good luck.
Thanks Lance. Good night. Sally, Sally, the Z RAC has taken the ball and run with it, and that they have, they have scheduled. This will now be three extra meetings, so I think the Z RAC has already scheduled themselves every week from now until March. So um I'll give them a lot of credit for stepping up.
Yeah.
Stepping up and doing that. They have, they have been the ones who've said we need to meet on a much more frequent basis, so I really appreciate that effort. Uh Eching, you were trying to say something and I, I missed it.
I just wanted an eating rule for the minutes, they should skip them out.
You want us to do the minutes this evening?
I don't, if we can do it quickly.
Um how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I have extremely terse edits on all the minutes.
Okay, so if the board wants to do it, why don't we jump into that? Taylor, if you could pop them up on the screen, please, because I can't sing you fine, mine.
And one thing I noticed in the agenda is by my notes, we still haven't reviewed and approved the November second minutes, but they weren't on the agenda. So we'll backtrack on that and start with the November third. And the only.
Wait, hold, hold on Sally, where, where were the November second minutes?
The November second minutes were in the packet for November twenty eighth. And then they didn't get discussed, and so they would be in the packet for the tw-. To twelfth, which is today.
What was the contents of the November second meeting uh minutes? What type of meeting was it?
It's the North Main Street Corridor and M B T A, three A, Community Compliance Remote Participation.
It wasn't a planning board meeting, so we don't have to approve those.
It says planning board public meeting, is that different?
I understand. Yeah, we, we removed it from the packet because it's not a planning board meeting.
So on the thank you for clarifying, so November third, I only had one correction on page one. It's the first bullet under number one. That the word master should say master, and that's the only edit I have on those. You see that? That's all I had.
Yep.
And then you want me to just go through the other ones?
No, we, they're just to approve this. I make a motion to approve the November third um me- meeting minutes.
Second.
No, yeah, we can't hear you if you're talking.
You're gonna lead a roll call vote?
I think that's a great idea, but D M has to participate if he can.
Okay.
What now?
Second to approve the November third minutes.
Okay, um let's do a roll call vote, um Eching.
Hi.
Nick. I see two Nicks, but. I don't know if Nick is still around.
Knicks, I see Nick with his mic on.
Okay, uh let's go on Sally.
I.
Um Carrie.
I.
I.
I, oh, there you go, Nick says.
Yeah, there's a reason, uh I don't understand why my audio not working, but.
Well. But I'm, I'm, I'm joining you in your club, Nick. My audio totally went out. Okay.
So moving to the November sixth minutes, I have one edit on page one only. Which is in the bottom where it says Ms Spencer. And on the second line, it says also reference the Central Business District Historical Building, section five of the regulations. I just wanted to add. The regulations governing section seven point three of the zoning bylaw, which is the full name of that document, so people would know. What the word regulations is referring to, and it's on page one where it's highlighted right there. And that's the only edit I have to the minutes of November sixth.
Okay.
Just to spell out regulations governing section seven point three of the zoning bylaw. That's the title of the document.
Um so are there any other? Edits or concerns? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve the November fourteenth meeting minutes as amended.
November sixth.
I'm sorry, November sixth.
That was the next one we were just doing, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my agenda. It says the third and the fourteenth.
Tom move.
Okay, so moved on the sixth, um the second.
I got it, second.
Okay, uh roll call vote, please, Nick.
I.
Eching.
I.
Sally.
I.
Carrie.
I.
I say I as well. Okay.
And then on the November fourteenth minutes, I have one edit on page two and one edit on page three. On page two, under number five, twenty seven Church Street. Um. Um I wanted to, at the end of the third line, so it says this lot is located in the Center Business District. And is thus subject to the requirements of seven point three of the zoning bylaw and. The regulations governing section seven point three of the zoning bylaw, just is subject to both of those. And so that was that edit on that one. And then on page three, item number six, under sign permits. Um there, it's, there's a paragraph that doesn't have a, a separation between the business. He summarized the two options, one, blah, 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 or two, on the next line. Have the planning board review signage in the C B D period noted the bylaw, and that should be one word capital V, and that's. Um oh, that's, that's one edit, and then, oh, yes, okay, section eight down below. Going through the list, this is the last, second to last line of section eight, after the semicolon, going through the list. Now, not not, but now. To identify the source to compile those related to state resources.
Okay.
It was a typo, that's all. So bylaw and now and spelling out that it's also on, on, on twenty seven church. That it's also subject to the regulations. Those are my only edits on November fourteenth.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of November fourteenth as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote, uh Eching.
I.
Nick.
I.
Thank you. Sally.
I.
And Carrie.
I.
And I say I as well. Um any other um last minute requests of the board?
We have November twenty eighth minutes to just approve really quickly. I have one comment.
I, I, we've got a. I'm, okay.
Did the, did the agenda not match the packet?
The agenda does not match. The agenda only has two sets of minutes on there.
Okay, let's put these off then. We'll do it the next time.
I, I'm.
There's four sets of minutes on the agenda.
No, the agenda says November twenty eighth.
Yeah, they, they're just on the same line.
I can't read, I apologize, that's.
Okay, so.
That's my fault, I don't know how to read.
Fast, on page three. Fast, on page three. Um number four, this is where we did the multiple granting of waivers. And in the header, it says thirty two, the very last line of this section four of the minutes. Which is the third or third paragraph on the top of page four. Mister Carly, the petitioner clarified that the address is actually thirty six, not thirty two, my question is. Should everything say thirty six?
It seems like, yeah, the title should say thirty six church street.
Right, so where thirty two came from, was in the motions, is that, is that literally in the, I'm sure Nancy would say it is.
So it's actually an assessing dispute, um. The lease that he signed is for the wrong property.
Oh.
But apparently that's allowed, I don't.
No.
Yeah, because it's the right building, just the wrong number.
Would be correct if it says thirty two at the title, and then he.
And all the motions would be correct too then, question mark?
I don't, I don't know. Yeah, yes, no, I, I, I don't know.
Maybe we just put a clarification at the very end of this section where Mister Carly clarified. That the address is thirty six, not thirty two, um. Just to say, this is a refer, put it in brackets, it was not part of the meeting, but. This is a reference to a ongoing assessors department discussion, or maybe don't say anything. When I saw that, I was like, whoa.
I think we need to say, I mean, these, if anyone is looking at these minutes to determine how we voted on this. Proposal, um.
Well, so if, if anything, the correct number is actually thirty four. So if it's, it's thirty two to thirty six, if if anything, the way that it's, that it's registered in the book is thirty four. So if we want to just make it, if we wanna just change it all, and that's what we're gonna do, it's thirty four.
Let's put a footnote, let's just put a footnote in and clarify that this, that this is for thirty four. So we should put something in there, I would lea- I would leave it, cuz the, we talked about thirty two, but put in a footnote, say that. This is for thirty four, and there's a dispute as to which number is which, but yeah.
And then on page five, I just have one very minor edit, under number seven, planning department budget. Chair Jerry has said we need to establish the planning board budget, instead of the year, I wanna say for fiscal year twenty five. Just for clarification sake, and those are my only edits to the minutes of November twenty eighth.
Okay, um.
I move that we approve the minutes for November twenty eighth, the um uh changes.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, uh roll call vote, Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Eching.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I say I as well, um and I think that's it, any, so now, now can I, can I ask if there's any further business? And you all are going to say no, correct? No, okay, can I get a motion to um? Adjourn.
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh roll call, uh Carrie.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Eching.
Hi.
I say I as well, thank you all very much, thanks to uh recording secretary Nancy Pocari.
Thanks for hanging out, Steve.
Thanks for hanging out, Steve, from our Z RAC. Uh thank you, WinCam as ever, for recording us and getting us out to the community. Thanks, Taylor Herman, our town planner, and Matt Schin, our town engineer for showing up, thanks to you all out there in TV land. And uh we, we will see you in a couple, no, I don't know when, we'll see you next.
January ninth.
January ninth, and there is a Z RAC meeting next Wednesday, so if you wanna show up and and listen to what the Z RAC is saying, please do. Uh, great evening, everyone.
You too, Steve.
Bye, bye, everybody.